Okay, we'll go ahead and reconvene the special meeting of Folsom City Council. And Mr. City Attorney, do we have any action to report out?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, sir. No final action.
Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn the special meeting of Folsom City Council and call it order, the regular meeting of Folsom City Council for Tuesday, August 28th. So go ahead and call that to order. If the clerk, please call and roll.
Councilmember Moran.
Here.
Sheldon.
Here.
Gaylord.
Here.
Howell.
Here.
And Miklos.
Here. If you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to remind everybody, if you have a cellphone, turn it to silent or vibrate, so it's not distracting. And for my colleagues up here, do the same, please. We have a long meeting. As of right now, we have at least 12 requests for speaking on the general plan, a number from business on the floor, so we have at least two to two and a half hours on speaker requests. So I'm letting you know ahead of time, is if you do have an item you want to speak on that's on the agenda, or from business on the floor, please bring it down here to the officer at the front here, so again, we can manage the time accordingly and efficiently to make sure all your comments are heard and thought out, and we can deliberate them. Okay, with that, if the clerk, please call the next item.
Your next item is Agenda Updates. You do have one item that's been updated tonight. That is Item 9B. The additional correspondence has been provided to the council members, and it is also available to the public at the back table.
Okay, next item.
Your next item tonight is Business from the Floor. You currently have six requests to speak. Your first speaker will be Mike Barnbaum. Mike will be followed by Rosario Rodriguez.
Okay, if you do hear your name in the queue, if you call, maybe come down and stand out towards the side. That way, we can, again, be efficient and get to the major items that I know a lot of you are here to hear and speak about. So if you hear your name and you're next up, I think Rosario follows Mike. Rosario, if you can be on cue to be ready. And then we'll continue to call the next speakers and have those folks ready so we can hear everybody this evening. Good evening, Mike. How are you?
Good evening. Doing wonderful. Thank you for asking.
Good.
Mike Barnbaum, and I head the Grassroots Organization, my downtown 916. Just as a reminder to everyone in the room and watching the replay on Channel 14, back in mid-June, specifically on Father's Day, on June 17th, regional transit extended hours of the Gold Line service to Folsom to include evenings and late nights, and that's seven days a week. Monday through Saturday service, last train back to Sacramento is at 11:30 at night, and on Sunday and holidays, it's at 9:30 at night. Why we bring this up and remind everybody, you have a handout I gave to the officer and the city manager prior to your coming to order tonight, and the handout is the 2018-2019 Sacramento Kings Regular Season Schedule. It has all 82 games on it. It does not include the preseason schedule, which includes home games on the 8th and 11th of October at 7:00 PM. We think that this schedule is a great tool for residents of the city of Folsom to use and take advantage of the new hours on the Gold Line, and they would not be special trains, but they are regular train services, whether or not there's a game, a concert, or anything. This is a great thing to take advantage of now that there's something in writing as to what could I use the service to go to. And, speaking of the King's schedule, or a related note, I have a special guest tonight I would like to introduce to you. Please welcome, from the city of Sacramento, and will be the city of Folsom on Tuesday, September 4th, the Honorable Desmond Parington. Desmond was a key staff member in the discussions during all the Golden One Center project updates through Assistant City Manager John Dangberg, who has since retired and is a principal consultant now to the city of Sacramento. Desmond will be part of your staff, starting Tuesday, as a principal planner with the Economic Development Department. And so I'd like to ask everyone to please welcome Desmond and his expertise from Sacramento to the city of Folsom. Thank you.
Is he here?
Yes.
I'm having to stand up. Oh, there he is.
Didn't know I was going to get introduced.
Yeah. Welcome, Desmond.
I'm excited about starting work with the city of Folsom, and very excited about the opportunities and challenges here. So excited working with Scott, and with Pam, and the whole team.
Well, welcome.
Didn't know I was getting introduced.
Now, we'll get to you later in the meeting as well.
Thank you. Hope you enjoy that, and I'll come back for 9B when you call it.
Thanks for the schedule. That's very helpful.
Thank you. Yep.
Okay.
Okay, your next speaker is Rosario Rodriguez, and Rosario will be followed by Harris Blixteem.
Good evening. My name is Rosario Rodriguez, and I'm a Folsom resident and business owner. Thank you for the opportunity to share some feedback tonight. Before I share my thoughts on an important topic, I want to say that I love the use of social media. I love that it brings people together, and you can easily find out what's going on throughout the community. I appreciate public forums on Facebook, such as Folsom Chat, because I've met many great people. I've hired many local businesses from this page, and I've been the recipient of many referrals that benefited my business. However, it's important that council members communicate information to the public that is true and accurate. On July 25th, there was a post that had inaccurate information posted about the level of service that was posted by one of the council members. This post created a frenzy among many Folsom residents. After several days of watching the post, I realized how irresponsible it is to have information coming from one of our council members to the public. I ask that you please have 100% understanding of topics before you share it with the public. To my fellow residents that are watching here or in the audience, I strongly recommend that the information you read on social media be fact-checked. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosario.
Your next speaker is Harris Blixteem. Harris will be followed by Coco Kokazella.
Hi.
Good evening.
There's paperwork being passed down, so.
Well, go ahead and start talking. We'll get it as we go.
Hi. I spoke here last June 24th regarding the two-hour parking restriction on Inwood Drive. At that time, my main issue was where to park our RV while we packed it for a trip. Mr. Mayor, thank you for helping us out on that issue. Again, we are taking another trip, leaving on September 10th, so I will be parking my RV up on Inwood again for a couple nights before we leave. I've written you twice regarding this issue, and I've also corresponded with Mark Rack of N, and you've got copies of all the correspondence there, along with the satellite image of the area in question. During the last meeting, you told me that Mark or Pete would get back to me. Now, the rest of the story, they never got back to me. I had to call Pete, and I left a voicemail for him that Wednesday. We talked twice on Thursday, and he said he couldn't email me anything to indicate that it was okay to park overnight, but it would be okay anyway. I told him that I was going to place a sign in the window saying that the mayor said it was okay for me to park overnight.
Stop right there. Stop the timer. I didn't give you permission to park there. I said you brought up a very, in fact, let's talk about it, because you sent me an email saying that.
Yeah.
And staff certainly sent me an email. If you read and watch the city council meeting for that evening, I never gave you permission. However, I did direct it to Mark and to Pete to talk to you right away, because I think that there needed to be a compromise, knowing that it's a temporary thing to load and unload your RV, because I also know that in a mobile home park, there is no place for you to be able to do that.
Right.
But please, let's be accurate, and none of the five of us up here can grant information, excuse me, permission to something to that extent. We don't have that authority.
Okay.
As long as we had the understanding. But I agreed with you that evening, and said you're absolutely right. We got to find a way to have a little bit of consideration for not only your mobile park, but there's two others in your surrounding area, to be able to do exactly what you did.
Okay.
So I'm happy to continue to support you, but let's be, I can't give you the permission.
I understand that. Okay.
Okay, we're good with that?
Anyway, they could, neither Mark nor Pete could give me anything to put in the vehicle saying it was okay to park there, which sort of bothered me. However, I did put that sign in on the window, and on Monday, July 2nd, when we were on our vacation, I did get a call from Pete telling me when we get back, don't put the sign up. It's not what we do. You know, we feel that somebody of influence is being appeased to the detriment of the seniors living in the mobile home park. If you look at the lower right side of the picture, you'll see a red dot near the intersection of Inwood and Van Winkle. A van has been stored on the street there for over six months, and I have pictures to prove it. Well before the two-hour parking restriction was even put on Inwood, around August 2nd, the city did mark the tires and issued a warning. That van was moved for a day or so, and now it's parked across the street, and it's been there ever since. In Mark's letter to me, he said that the parking restriction on Inwood was put in place because people were violating the city's 72-hour abandoned vehicle ordinance. In order for all residents to be treated equal, I suggest that a two-hour parking restriction be placed on Van Winkle Court. The precedent has already been set. If you think that's ridiculous, why is the parking restriction on Inwood more stringent than in the historic district? Folsom Municipal Code Section 10.16 and 10.20 already address the consequences of parking in excess of 72 hours. Why was the two-hour parking restriction necessary in the first place, other than maybe overkill? Our neighbor, Jeanette Ashman, is disabled, and she used to park her extra vehicle on Inwood at night. Now, the closest legal parking place she has is a half mile from her house. I have discussed this issue with an attorney who believes that the city may be unlawfully discriminating against two protected classes, senior citizens and disabled people. The mayor, city council, and city attorney need to investigate this matter, because there's more to it than what's apparent on the surface. Something just isn't right.
Wrap this up for me.
All we want to do is park our cars overnight on the street in front of our park. And that's what I have to say.
I will direct the traffic safety committee to take this up again, and invite the residents and notify the residents of when it's going to be taken up, so you can come down and participate.
Okay.
There's got to be a happy medium someplace. But we do have an issue with people deciding to park their vehicles all over the community. It's not just your neighborhood, to where they're using as a convenient storage place in front of somebody else's yard or somebody's school. It does create a traffic hazard. But, in your particular case, at least from the RV side, there's got to be a happy medium that maybe we can investigate and figure out how to make that happen.
Okay.
But as far as the legality, certainly I don't like to comment on that, because if you're saying you're talking to attorneys, certainly I will remind the five of us up here. I don't think any further discussion needs to be had on this item, because he just let us know he's talking to an attorney. And I'm watching the nodding from my city attorney agreeing with that we should limit our discussion now. But I just directed the director for, Trapp Mark, to put on the most available, soonest agenda, and notify you.
Okay, now I'm going to be out of-
I believe you have his contact info.
Yeah. I'm going to be out of town from the 10th through the end of November.
Let him know. So if, from now until the end of November?
Yes, we're going to be-
Well, then you're going to, your residents aren't going to be happy then, because it's not going to be heard till you get back then.
Okay.
If you want to participate.
Yeah, I would like-
No, I just want to make sure, because again, we want to accommodate what works for you to participate. So if you want, if it's okay for, after you get back, then-
That's fine.
Yeah, make sure you communicate that well to Mark.
Eighty-five-hundred-mile loop around the country.
Oh, that sounds like fun.
We're going to have a good time.
Well, have a safe drive. Enjoy yourself.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yep. Okay, thanks again. Your next?
So next speaker is Coco Kokazella, and Coco will be followed by Jessica, it looks like Shunk.
Hi, Coco.
Good evening. Coco Kokazella. Fully reliant on public transportation. I don't have a car of my own. I've spoken about this before, but, and I know there has been some theory or potential, potentially more than a theory about the stage line becoming part of RT. I don't know whether that will manifest, but whether it does or doesn't, I'm here to continue the request of increased frequency on the number 10 line. And it's, I think, even more relevant now that we have increased frequency and longer hours of the light rail, because you still have a dilemma of your full-trip time if your bus is the bottleneck. So, yeah, so that's one continued wishlist item. And I think that you, I believe you would find if the service were increased, you probably would have, over time, increased ridership as well, because it would be a service that would be fully, you know, useful in a larger sense. The other thing is, and this is completely kind of off the rails, excuse the pun, which is, for a very long time, I've wondered whether it would ever be possible, and I know this is fiscally probably nonsense, to have a light rail stop at Blue Ravine, because there's a lot of businesses and things happening there, and there's been plenty of times when I wish I could have stopped on Blue Ravine, and the distance between Glen and Iron Point, or Glen and Historic, is pretty far, and it's a big walk to get to Blue Ravine if you have business to do there. So in the future, when there's double-track expansion, maybe that can be discussed. Thank you.
Thank you, Coco. Good points. Okay, next one.
Next speaker is Jessica Shunk, and Jessica is followed by Lauren Mayhew.
Hello. My name's Jessica Shunk. I am a Folsom resident. Been here for six years. Thank you for your time. I'd like to address some concerns I have regarding the Seaquest that's going in at the Paladio. You know, I'm the first person that would take my two-year-old to an aquarium, because it would run a lot of energy off. But unfortunately, I have been to a Seaquest facility in Fort Worth, Texas, and the conditions we saw there were appalling. There was iguana, an iguana missing part of its face. The enclosures were incredibly small. There was no even illusion of habitat. There was just concrete, PVC pipe, fake ivy from Michael's that they were literally stapling to the wall while we were there. Poor ventilation, and the water was so murky in the touch tank, you couldn't see six inches in. And there was exposed sea clamps holding acrylic together for enclosures, a monitor lizard escaping the habitat. And these animals are being kept in frankly horrifying conditions. And so I would ask that, you know, if this facility does go forward that way, is the community would hold them accountable to hopefully observing the standards set not only by the Animal Welfare Act, but by the Association of Zoos and Aquariums, at least when it concerns animal care. So, and these animals did not have a choice to interact with people. There was nowhere for them to go but to be right in with these people. Now, that's the highlight, that it's interactive, but not to that extent. So, thank you.
Okay, good points. Thank you.
Your next speaker is Lauren Mayhew.
Anybody following her?
Nope.
Okay. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. I'm here on behalf of thousands of residents across Sacramento County, predominantly from Folsom, who have signed a petition and are concerned about the opening of Seaquest Interactive Aquarium at the Paladio. Since 2012, Seaquest CEO Vince Covino has been in the news repeatedly for allegations and convictions against him regarding his aquarium endeavors. Currently, there are two ongoing investigations being conducted by the Department of Agriculture in Colorado, and it was just announced days ago that the Seaquest is being called out by Florida State Representative Ted Deutsch, stating in a lengthy letter that I've just passed out to you, that Seaquest has violated the Animal Welfare Act and is asking the USDA to investigate all locations. Two months ago, Seaquest purchased and put on display a sloth, two capybaras, and 80 birds without obtaining proper permits. Upon inspection, it was documented that birds were being held in makeshift cages, eating the drywall, and roaming through a back room where they could easily become injured. They failed animal safety violations just a few days after their grand opening, and as a result, were issued a cease and desist warrant. Their solution was to be, to hold the animals illegally in somebody's garage, one of which, one of which was a teenage boy. The 50 excess birds were sold in a parking lot across the street from Seaquest Littleton location, an action that is also currently under investigation by the Department of Agriculture. The intentional starvation of animals to encourage eating out of humans' hands, hundreds of animals dying before opening day, 11 stingrays dying within one night, and over 200 animals dying within a three-month period are alleged by past employees across multiple aquariums owned by CEO Vince Covino. Seaquest retains no or minimal trained vet techs on staff to ensure the health and safety of their animals, and they are not supported by the American Zoological Association. Rather than rehabilitating animals, they are a for-profit entity buying and selling animals online, seeking to monetize on our love and curiosity of wildlife. Other concerns surround the structural integrity and safety, including potential zoning issues of a retail space housing sea life, and potential damages done to neighboring retail spaces. Customers have reported that they've contracted scabies from the touch tanks, witnessed abuse of animals, and experienced OSHA violations, which are on record. Californians take pride in our ethical standards involving the environment, which is why the Folsom Zoo, Sacramento Zoo, and Monterey Bay Aquarium are so beloved. Seaquest claims that they will be fostering education, rehabilitation, and a safe space for people and animals to come together, but in practice, this has not been the case. Time and time again, Seaquest has shown disrespect for the animals in their care and the law, undermining individuals who dedicate their lives to caring for and conserving wildlife, and the public at large who are fooled by Seaquest's claims of edutainment. We ask the city council to do the right thing and revoke or refuse permits to this company for operation in our city, as I know myself and our residents do not want to take Folsom's reputation on a company that has proven themselves to be incapable of fulfilling the duty that they've taken on. Thanks.
Thank you.
You have no more requests to speak.
Okay, so that's it from business on the floor. So our next item, if you can introduce that one, please.
Your next item is Scheduled Presentation Item 6A. This is a presentation regarding intelligent transportation systems in Folsom.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. This evening, we are pleased to welcome Matt Weir, President at Kimley Horne and Associates. Mr. Weir and his firm, Kimley Horne, have long been a valuable consulting resource to your staff in many aspects of transportation, including the development of our ITS master plan, and their work on the SaCog Smart Region Sacramento Project. This evening, Matt is here to provide us with an update on the status of the city's Intelligent Transportation Systems Project, and to give us some idea what it would take to get our major arterials to fully functional smart corridors. Also with us in the audience this evening is Ms. Benue Abraham, who is the ITS manager at SaCog overseeing the Smart Region Sacramento Project. Benue is also a resident of Folsom. She wanted me to make sure you knew that. And she has also been very valuable in aiding your staff in the development of our ITS program and our consistency and compatibility with the rest of the region. And with that, I'll turn the presentation over to Matt.
Thank you very much, Mark. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you for having me this evening. So you've already heard, or you heard, one key acronym or buzzword on this general topic, Intelligent Transportation Systems, or ITS. Another term that you are beginning to hear more and more every day, literally, is the term "smart city." So I will touch on both of those terms as I move through this brief presentation. But let's first talk about the environment in which the city is currently required to operate. It is an environment that's full of disruptive technologies. Disruptive technologies displace established technology, shake up the industry, and in some cases, create completely new industries, some of which are depicted here on this slide. These disruptive technologies are creating a paradigm shift, requiring bold planning efforts, incorporating a new way of thinking. And frankly, what's startling to our industry is that it's no longer adequate to look backward to plan the future. Historic data is no longer the single indicator of future behavior. Those are some pretty bold and powerful statements there. So the challenge for the city right now is to make order of this disruption and plan or define a path forward. So the combination of these disruptive technologies come together to create a "smart city," and I'm using air quotes when I say that, but a true "smart city" incorporates these elements that are shown here on this slide, as well as many, many others. Traffic control is just one of the components, and is the focus of the remainder of this presentation. Smart technology and analytics in the form of traffic control, supporting a much more broad "smart city" movement. So this slide accomplishes a few things. Talks about the past, the ITS or "smart city" planning efforts here in the city of Folsom, and also touches on some other concurrent efforts going on in the Sacramento region. So all the way back, in case you weren't aware, in 2004, the city developed, what is called here, an interim ITS plan, which was subsequently updated in 2015. Regionally, what we have is US, Caltrans is leading a US-50 Integrated Corridor Management Project, which I understand has been presented to this council. The city of Sacramento is going through a smart mobility strategy, which aligns or coincides, and is intended to inform the mobility element of their general plan update. And then, as Mark mentioned, SaCog is currently developing a Smart Region Sacramento Project, which includes two primary components, a regional technology and mobility master plan, and then individual agency technology implementation plans, one of which is being prepared for the city of Folsom. So it's essentially an update of the 2015 plan that's shown here. Okay, so here's a snapshot of the current or existing conditions related to traffic or transportation operations, infrastructure in the city. A few highlights here, there are just shy of 100 signals. 10 of those traffic signals, their controllers are what we would call advanced, or again, the air quotes using "smart." There is, that will soon be 20. There's plans to retrofit another 10 here in the near future, and a longer-term plan to retrofit up to 20 a year. There are 10 closed-circuit television cameras, about 21 miles of fiber optic cable, about 11 miles of leased fiber, and about 2 and 1/2 miles of wireless communications. Just from that summary, you can tell that the current existing network has a, it's a patchwork, and it has multiple communications media. There's, it's lacking consistency, and we hear from city staff, it's difficult to maintain. There are multiple signal controller vendors and products, and only a small proportion of the traffic signal equipment is accessible, remotely accessible, from the city's currently, or current makeshift traffic operations center at the Corporation Yard. And through our coordination with Mark and others at the city, they have very clearly expressed a desire to improve system automation and reliability, primarily through the use of automated performance measures, as well as remote diagnostics and operations. So before we move to the ultimate vision for that same network, just a few images to make this a little more tangible. So this is a picture of a current traffic signal controller that is, I've been using the term "smart," so the opposite of that would be, again, with air quotes, "dumb." But this is one of the older controllers that the city has at roughly 80, 80 to 90 of the existing signals. And what's shown here is one of the brand-new smart controllers that, as you can tell, is operational at Broadstone and Golf Links. Other smart technologies, fiber optic cable, high-speed communications, closed-circuit television cameras, video detection, and then I just added this because I thought it was interesting. Obviously, it's overkill, but we certainly are not envisioning a future network that has that concentration of video cameras. Okay, here's the ultimate conditions, and I will, I'll give similar highlights as I did on the existing. There is, this current draft of the ultimate includes another 26 traffic signals, 19 additional closed-circuit television cameras, 16 total changeable message signs, and another 35 miles of fiber optic cable. Some additional highlights include a fully functional traffic operations center here at City Hall, a complete and redundant communications network, and now the price tag to get from where the city is today to this ultimate condition. It is more than $30 million. Some highlights of that large price tag include about $16.5 million to upgrade key corridors, another $11 million to upgrade secondary corridors. There's additional costs to, that are specific to connected and automated vehicles, to enable the system to accommodate them, and that runs at more than half a million. So rather than leave you there, we also looked at more tangible, near-term chunks of this ultimate condition, or near-term projects, that could be considered and could be a high priority for the city to pursue. And they include improvements along key corridors, $2.2 million on Iron Point Road. And they include improvements along key corridors, $2.2 million on Iron Point Road, $1.8 million on Blue Ravine, $1.3 on East Bidwell, and another $550,000 on Folsom Boulevard. So those numbers I just gave you include complete communications and traffic signal controller equipment upgrades. So now, to briefly touch on why. So predictable outcomes of expanding your intelligent transportation system, or becoming more of a smart city, there's improved efficiency gained. ITS has been demonstrated to reduce average delay. The numbers vary, but it's in the 10% to 20% reduction of average delay. And those are really powerful, meaningful metrics when you consider peak hours. If you're able to take 10% of delay off of a critical intersection or a critical movement, you can really experience some noticeable and tangible benefits. And then, of course, the investment in technologies is often in the place of capital investments. So much, although there are some large price tags, large dollar amounts that I mentioned, they are far less than other larger, more intensive capital improvements, which makes it a bigger bang for the buck, especially when you consider the peak periods.
Before you move up the peak periods, so if you're looking at a delay of a delay, and not just that you had to stop at a light, a delay of 30 seconds, with a $30 million expenditure, that would reduce the delay by three seconds to 27 seconds. Is that correct? Or maybe as much as six seconds if you were to get 20%, then it gets you down to 24 seconds?
These are average numbers that we're using.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Right. It's worth noting to expound on that, that price tag is the fully functional and operational system, which includes communication that enables the city to remotely operate and manage and maintain all of the devices. So there's an operations and maintenance side, as well as the obvious benefit to the user.
No, I understand that. I just wanted to clarify that we're talking about a 10% to 20% reduction in the delay.
On average.
So in the case of a 30-second delay, it's three seconds to six seconds shorter.
On average.
Okay, thanks.
So if I may, currently, if you go back a slide to our current infrastructure, the way it's laid out, I didn't see anything here as far as options on segmenting the upgrades by having kind of like a VMS or a smart analytics control, you know, starting that phase first, and then rolling out intersection by intersection as it's built up, or as it's redone. And then also, is our current infrastructure, what's the end-of-life look like on the technology at this point right now?
Well, it varies depending on which component you're talking about. Certainly, you know, the signal controllers that Matt pointed out, the multisonic controls, they're still functional, but they're limited in their function. The new cobalts that we're adding to the system offer us a lot more ability to do the performance measures and analytics that we need to make the system more operational. And they all have long lives. You know, they're fairly simple electronic components that can be repaired readily. The technology always is advancing, and we're always considering whether or not to make the leap to the next generation of controller, which is what the cobalts are. We had a couple of false starts with products that we thought were good, didn't do what we needed. Fiber optic has been a longstanding component, and doesn't seem to be going anywhere anytime Most of the other devices are also fairly simple electronics that have a long shelf life, but it's the technology that always changes that pushes the older technology out the door and limits its serviceable life.
And then, have we played with any wireless solutions? I saw wireless up there, but are we only looking at fiber optic?
We do have a few wireless bridges in town that are stop-gap measures that simply do not perform, do not move the data as well as having a large trunk line of fiber.
And back to the first question with the VMS, are we looking at, is there a migration path where we can start with a solution and a platform to build from, to limit that exposure to cost? And then, what does that look like between current operation costs versus, you know, instead of replacing with what's there, broken, and just replacing with the same thing, migrating that up? So is there like that comparison for where we're at versus going forward? Or is that?
I don't think we really have that level of economic analysis. You know, we've just simply decided to make the leap from, you know, just individual controls at 98 signals to advanced controls with communications and a central processing center. That's just been assumed as part of our capital improvement program, and we have not, frankly, done the analysis of what would happen if we didn't do that and just maintain the status quo. Is that the question you're asking?
Well, I guess, so like, in my professional life, I do security, and a lot of it's surveillance with analytics and like video management software. And if I took this as a building, I would literally look at each one of those intersections as a camera, and I would develop a solution that is a go-forward, non-proprietary solution in the hub, and then expand out and touch each one of those intersections as they go, instead of replacing it with the older version or whatever that was. And I'm looking at maybe the newer version of that, but not quite the best. I would look at a solution that I can grow into to mitigate costs, and then get to this level of analytics and sophistication that would reduce it by the 20%, and that's per car, I think. So six seconds per car in an intersection at East Bidwell when you're coming out of McCoon's is a pretty substantial decrease, and would help obtain some of those levels of service we're talking about. So I guess I'm looking for that kind of fine-tuning when we talk about smart city. So I haven't had the experience as far as where, you know, staff is on it. I know everyone's looking at it, and this is super informational, but I would look at it from, instead of gutting and blowing it up and saying it's $30 million, I would look at it from just the standpoint of a brain, and then function out to the arterials and the intersections and do it that way.
Right. And that is, in essence, the strategy that is laid out in the master plan that we worked on with Kimley-Horn. The reality is that we make changes when new signals come onboard, and so it might not be something that is the highest priority in our network, but because it's a new signal or a signal that's been destroyed through a traffic accident and needs to be updated, you know, we do it then, and then we find a way to tie that new controller back to our center. As Matt pointed out, miles and miles of communications line that we need to lay back, first to our traffic operations center that's at the Corporation Yard, and then we've already built the line that leads from the Corporation Yard to City Hall. Now we just need to build the center here at City Hall. We already have the controller software, the master controller software that runs the system. We are focusing on major corridors like East Bidwell Street in the near term. Matt mentioned that there's 10 new of the Cobalt smart controllers that are about to come online. Those are all along the East Bidwell corridor, and they'll be online this year. We already have the communications along East Bidwell to tie it back to our center. And we also just received several flow monitors from a vendor at a very reasonable price. And so we're going to set up flow monitoring, data collection along the East Bidwell corridor, so we can really start diving into performance measures and analytics.
And just to be fair, I haven't seen that master plan, but I just requested it, so probably questions are in there that I'm asking, so don't worry. I appreciate the answers.
You can have my copy at the end of the meeting, sir.
I would love it. Thank you.
If I may just add, so the brains or the central system that currently runs those 10 smart controllers, and will run the 20, is expandable to communicate with and operate all 124 of them in the future.
Perfect.
So that is a long-term vision, and part of the reason the city uses, selected the vendor that they did years ago.
Thank you.
I have a quick question, Mayor. So I think you touched on this, Mark. So every new signal that goes in has what we need. I'm not talking the fiber, because I know that's kind of a different animal, but every new signal that goes in has what we need to, you know, get to kind of the highest stage we're looking for then.
Generally speaking, that's correct. You know, we tend to prioritize major intersections over minor intersections. So for example, the work we're about to do, the six signals on Empire Ranch Road, we will have a full suite of smart technology at the key intersections of, say, East Nataoma, Broadstone Parkway, and Iron Point Road, whereas the other signals such as at Ritchie and Owl Meadow and Fear will not have, you know, they'll have the connectivity, they'll have the communications, but they might not have the full suite of video detection and monitoring and flow monitoring, for example.
Okay. And so getting to the fiber optics and the trunk lines you speak of, that's a great shot there. So the south of Highway 50 growth area there, are we going to be all stubbed in with fiber where we need it?
Yes, that was a condition on Folsom Ranch Development that they put in. The trunk line conduit and vaults for the fiber, and that all of the signals will have the technological components that we need.
Are they putting the fiber in too, Mark?
I think they did for, under Highway 50, the Placerville Road and the railroad corridor, that's kind of the trunk line. I don't think they've done anything else yet.
But will they be required to put the fiber in?
I believe they are.
Okay.
Any further questions? Okay, with that, well, thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate that. It was a great update. We do have one request to speak on this item. So, clerk?
The speaker is Gwynn Willison. So that speaker has declined.
Okay. Okay, so no further. Go ahead and call the next item.
Your next item this evening is Consent Calendar.
Anybody wishing to pull anything off consent, otherwise motion's in order.
I'll move consent.
Second.
Motion seconded. Go ahead and call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Moran.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
Howell.
Yes.
And Miklos.
Yes. Call the next item, please.
Your next item tonight is New Business Item 8A. This is Resolution Number 10166, a resolution to approve and adopt a citywide pay schedule as required by the California Public Employees Retirement System, fondly known as CALPERS.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jim Francis, your Assistant City Manager and Human Resource Director for this issue. This issue is that the PERS requires you to adopt a salary schedule for all positions in the town. This is listed here. Most of these have been approved through collective bargaining prior to this, and it's required anytime we change salaries within the city. In addition, the state legislation, however, requires that in regards to local agency executives, that you shall get an oral report on any changes in salaries, salary schedules, and compensation paid in the form of fringe benefits. And I'm here to give you that report.
Fire away.
Since the last time you adopted this schedule...
Jim, just before you get started, could you just explain, you know, the three sentences as to why this is now required by the state of California?
The oral report, you mean?
Why is, yes, this is required basically because of the city of...
Oh.
Bell.
Bell, yeah. Yeah, it was the city of Bell that required, or produced this legislation as a result of the incidents down there. So what's happened since the last time you adopted this report is that there were four promotions. The city manager was promoted. You had a promotion into the Assistant City Manager position, you had a promotion into the Police Chief position, and you had the Library Director promoted. There were the City Attorney, the Fire Chief, the Director of Parks and Rec, the Director of Community Development, the Director of Environmental and Water Resources, the City Clerk, and the Communications Manager all had a 2.5% COLA and 2.5% merit increase. The City Clerk and the Communications Manager were given tuition reimbursement as compensation in the form of a fringe benefit. The Assistant City Attorney was given a market adjustment and a 2.5% COLA. And the legal analyst, Legal Secretary, and Administrative Support Specialist were all given a market adjustment plus 2.5% COLA and a 5% merit. Those were all in line with what was given to the bargaining units, and those are all the changes that have been made in the past year. And that's my report, unless you have any questions.
Any questions for Jim?
Need to open the public hearing?
No, it's not. It's just a new business item.
Okay, I'll move the resolution.
I'll second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Moran.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
That was a yes?
Yes.
Howell.
Yes.
And Miklos.
Yes. Okay. Call the next item, please.
Next item is New Business Item 8B. This is Ordinance Number 1288, an ordinance amending certain provisions in Chapter 9.69 of the Folsom Municipal Code pertaining to the use of skate parks. This will be introduction and first reading of the ordinance.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Chad Gunner, and I'm the Records Supervisor for the City's Aquatics Program, Skate Park, and Special Needs Programming. Tonight, I'm here to answer any questions you might have regarding the amendment of certain provisions in the Folsom Municipal Code, Section 9.69, per state law pertaining to skate park operations, specifically the requirement for all participants to wear pads, elbow pads, helmets, knee pads, when entering the park for recreation use. You have the, the municipal code and the provisions were provided to you in a staff report, along with the red lines and the new ordinance as attachment number two. And I will entertain any questions or thoughts you have pertaining to this.
Any questions?
All right. Go ahead, no.
No, no, you first, please.
I want to make a comment. I think it's a much, it's a well-documented ordinance, something we needed quite a while. That skate park just didn't happen. That skate park had over five years of comprehensive study at the Annual California Conference of Park Commissioners. And what we did for five years, we watched everybody else that were building skate parks to see what was the good and what was the bad. And from that, we formed the skate park in conjunction with a professional skateboard organization down south that came up and was our contract. And up to this time, since that skate park existed, many other skate parks in the area, because they did not follow what we did, have closed. And we never came close to closing this one. And we've had a number of testimonies from primary moms, some dads, that they feel safe dropping the kids off at that skate park, because we have supervision and reinforced safety. Now, I know old-time skateboarders, they don't like the helmets and the pads, and they're indestructible, and many of them are. And also, when we created that skateboard, one of the emphasis to making the skateboard park was to get the kids out of the shopping centers that were skating between moving cars, hitching rides, scaring the devil out of people driving the cars, and endangering, because they were indestructible in their mind. But it caused a great hazard. And we had made a choice of do we charge or do we not charge to some degree? And we decided to charge only because, at that time, we wanted a supervised person on the scene that can respond and keep safety a primary object. So I think in our experience, since we had that skateboard park, we've had a few accidents, a few broken arms, and things like that have happened. That's a pretty good sport for that kind of injuries. But I think the decision we made way back wasn't made overnight. I can assure you, it was five years of looking at other people's good and bad, and trying to take all the goods and eliminate the bad. So I think this is a very good document. I commend all you that put it together.
Thank you, sir.
Roger?
Thank you. Appreciate that. So Bernie's right, it didn't happen by a miracle. It was a lot of work and a lot of effort, and I think the kids in Folsom, or teenagers and adults, actually, are grateful for having it. So it's definitely a gem in the, not only skateboarding, I would say rollerblading, you know, actually, not rollerblading anymore, it's not cool anymore, but scootering and all the other, all the other extreme sports. But the issue I have with it is in '99, I lobbied as a kid, as a junior in high school to get the skate park, because I was always getting ticketed by Folsom PD for grinding on the ledges. I used to rollerblade, so it's not cool anymore. We've already established that. So we lobbied and lobbied and lobbied, and folks like Ernie, you know, put the effort forward and as a city leader heard the lobbying and thus the skate park. The problem we have is that I literally could go anywhere I want to today and play basketball in the streets and not get a ticket. I could go play football in the streets and not get a ticket, yet I have fields upon fields to do all those sports and not have any kind of hours, requirements, fee structure, nothing, it's just there. Extreme sports are the only sports, they're very popular, but the only ones that you get actually ticketed and you damage property. So the problems I have with the skate park and, I agree, every person under the age of 18 should require helmet and pads, I think that's absolutely appropriate. Every skate park, except for the, except for one in this general vicinity, I would almost, I would go past Citrus Heights, Roseville, Rockland, Auburn, Loomis, Eldorado. There's one in Sacramento. The only ones that require any kind of fee structure or hours are for-profit parks, we make no profit on our parks, in fact, we probably spend more than, we put in more than we get back. So my recommendations are, A, over 18, no requirements, because it's, they're adults at that point, they take the liability on themselves. And also the hours, we extend those hours to replicate other sports parks. So if a basketball court is open from dawn to dusk, the skate park should be open from dawn to dusk. When we limit those hours, we push those folks that are looking creative, for creative methods to do their sport onto the streets, and thus we have the grinding and we have the, and then we cap the ledges and they can't do that, and so it becomes just more of a, I guess, kind of a nuisance and a headache, and you get those skateboarders out doing their thing. And so anyway, long story short, you know, I was a big advocate for removing the fee for the skate park, you don't charge for any other sports, so why skate, why charge for that? There's no helmet or pad required, there's a helmet requirement, no pad requirement for the BMX park, which is the other part of this. That's a big component to the Cummins Park itself, there's a lot of chatter on those folks saying they want to have some ability to restructure that park and move it around with, I don't know the concerns, but I'll send them to you, I got some emails on it. So anyway, I'm gonna cycle back, sorry, I'm digressing, but I would like to see the requirement for pads and helmets, not for over 18, and I would like to see those hours adjusted to where they match the actual parks, everything else, so.
Well, I'll defer to our City Attorney here on this, but I do believe that we're complying with state law provides, by complying with state law provides the city with affirmative defense in case something happens out there. And we want to make sure we have the protection through the state. State law requires that anybody, no matter what age, is required to wear pads in a monitored facility, is that?
So Steve, I'd like to hear, expand on what he was talking about, because I also have a concern that, you know, though someone's legally an adult, 18 and over, but they're still using a facility within our jurisdiction monitored by one of our employees.
I mean, we've been sued for adults that get hurt on bike trails, so.
Well, just to add the last part of that.
If state law requires this, then I'm all in favor of complying with state law.
I don't think the parks should be monitored, I think every other park around us is non-monitored, I think we're wasting money by having monitored, because just to give you a case in point, ironically, I still rollerblade, might be the last one of my breed in the city, but I still go out when I can, and that park is littered with trash that comes from the concession stand. So it's just out there, and I took pictures and I've actually sent you emails on it, and it seems like it's kind of a waste. So I know that when we charged for the fee, we were actually open to some liabilities for actually charging, and that's why the decision was, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's, that was one of the issues with why we decided that's correct. But there is no other park in the region that has the requirements that our park has, and it reduces folks even using it, so I'll just leave it at that, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. I hear Councilmember Gaylord raised three concerns. One, not to require safety equipment be worn by individuals over 18. Two, regarding monitoring of the park, and three, regarding hours of operation. Two and three are policy calls that a city gets to make, so it's up to you what you want to do with monitoring or no monitoring, supervising or no supervision or extending or reducing hours of operation. But with respect to number one, unfortunately, our hands are tied by state law, there's no distinction between over or under 18. Anyone using state skateboard park must wear required helmet, elbow pads and knee pads.
Can I add to that? So the helmet is the requirement, the elbow pads and knee pads are not, which is why we don't have to have them on the BMX park.
All three are requirements under state law.
Why are they not on the BMX park?
That's not a state, that's not a skateboard park. This requirement, or those requirements are only applicable to a skateboard park.
Is the differentiator the monitored portion of the park?
No.
So what are the other, I guess we need to look back at the other parts of why other parks in the area, almost all of them have zero requirements.
For safety equipment?
There's nothing.
Then they're not complying with state law.
I cannot speak for them, but we have to comply with state law. In fact, the state law says no operator of a skateboard park shall permit a person to use the park unless that person is wearing a helmet, elbow pads and knee pads. So if the person is not wearing, or we allow the person to use skateboard park without wearing those three safety equipments, we cannot operate the park.
I'd like to make another comment to sort of balance maybe Roger's approach. The reason we were very strong on, in fact, we overrode, the commission overrode the director at the time, not the current one, about do we have a person on status or not? Well, the prime, one of the primary reasons not only was it safety, but it was to keep the darn gangs out of the parks. Because most of the time when a skateboard parks are taken over, if there's no supervision by gangs, and they don't necessarily form the gangs from the town. We don't have any significant gangs that I'm aware of in this town, but they will come in this town if they can do it, okay? And that's exactly why, because if, and they do come in, we call the police and they're not here, okay? And that's the way, that's why you can drop your kids off at that park and feel pretty much safe. They're not gonna be bullied, they're not gonna be shot and things of that nature, because we don't allow that, okay? And sometimes when you look at other places, maybe we're better than they are, you know? I know when I was on the commission for 20 years, that was our goal, all the commissioners in the Park and Rec. We're not gonna be average, we're trying to be above average, because our kids are more safe, more concerned maybe to us. I'm not knocking the regions, because I wouldn't do that, because, you know, constraints are constraints. But I think, I think our skateboard park was designed for the right reason, we invested the right money. We had our police department go out at the beginning when we built that park and gave out free passes because it's, I can't afford two bucks to go to that, to park, okay? In order to get over that, we gave them, to get them out of the shopping centers and destroying all kinds, as Roger said, yeah, he granted on ventures, we still have some of that, unfortunately. But there's no excuse now, there wasn't a excuse back in his day, because we had no park, but now we have a park and had a park.
We have a park that can't be used at a lot of hours of the day, so the problem with that, like, I'm less, I'm less, and I don't want to beat it dead on, this is not a very important, it is important because it's simple, but it's, it's important because I get a lot of feedback, and when the, when the fee was removed, people were rejoicing and they were emailing like crazy saying, you know, they don't have to pay the fee. But now the emails are, we can't use it at certain times, and a monitored park, I'm fine if it's state law that requires pads, okay, I wasn't aware of that, there's a lot of others that aren't doing it, so maybe that's, you know, we're being compliant, I'm totally cool with that.
We have controls, we have controls in other parks, we closed the park, I think it does.
I'm talking about other skate parks, yeah.
Oh, right.
So whatever, I'm not gonna argue that part, so I'm fine with that, but the monitored piece and the hours, I think they should be just the same as the park hours that it's at. You can go walk your dog or play basketball or BMX or whatever, and honestly, you go by there at Sunday at seven when it's closed, there's folks in there climbing over the fence, you know what I mean? So it's like, all we're doing is opening ourselves up for more liability if we just don't have it open for standard park hours, you know?
I think the rule of law should provide them, you can't have free of everything and just, you know, there's gotta be some controls.
So here's my.
I just can't agree with you there at all, Roger.
Let me jump in and kind of interrupt this one, because I want to, I hear what you're all saying, so, no, 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 no. Well, because I, again, look at the main body, what we're supposed to be doing this evening, and we're having a discussion about hours, which is still in here as part of the regulation. So my suggestion would be is, is, and I want to hear consensus from the five of us, send that question to the Park and Rec Commission, because that's what their task to do. I think it's appropriate. The other answer to you on the other skate parks as an example is, you know, the other jurisdictions could be private, we have additional restrictions as a public entity, perhaps. Again, I don't know those other jurisdictions.
I can accept that.
Yeah, so to me, I like what you guys have done, I like that we're, again, staying on top of state regulations for public owned facilities. So to me, this is absolutely no-brainer, but I would like to make a recommendation that the two items that Mr. Gaylord has brought up be remanded back to the Park and Rec Commission for discussion, and if you guys are all fine with that.
That is where that should happen, and I just want us to be in compliance with state law.
Okay.
I have no, I have no objection to having to go back to the commission at all, but I would assume they saw this before it came to us.
No, I'm just talking about the two questions.
Yeah, so Mayor, I'll move the item with your suggestion based on Roger's discussion there.
Okay, any further discussion on this? Can you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Moran.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Gaylord.
It's to pass everything and remand the two questions you had to the Park Commission for discussion to bring back to us about hours and monitoring.
All right, yes.
Howell.
Yes.
And Miklos.
Yes. So where's our park director? So if we can get that on there fairly quickly, so we can, shouldn't be too difficult, I appreciate it.
Get that cleaned up on your last day, Robert.
Or whoever. Oh, we called the next item, please.
Your next item is old business item 9A. This is a report back regarding janitorial maintenance services and video surveillance options at various City of Folsom facilities.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Tim O'Shea, and I'm your Facilities Manager with the Park and Rec Recreation Department. I'm reporting back regarding the janitorial maintenance services and video surveillance at the parking garage that was presented at a previous council meeting. In the last report, we had a few factors that led to unsatisfactory conditions with regards to the restrooms and the overall cleanliness of the facility. Among them was the contractors assigned to cleaning, the contractors assigned cleaning crew and staff's oversight of their work. As detailed in the staff report, that situation has been remedied with removal and replacement of that previously assigned crew and a more aggressive oversight of their work. And I wanted to show you a few pictures of what the facility is looking like right now. I'm hoping I'm sending it, there we go. Sorry about that. Okay, I'll just go with these ones here. So what we had, we've done a lot of renovation work over there in making this thing cleaned up, so we've.
Quick question, that damage in the top photo, is that from skateboards?
No grinding was found on that one there, but it is a galvanized surface, so the paint peeled right off of that, so we've done some repainting on that. The restrooms that we had, we've done a lot of painting inside of there, we painted the inside, we painted the outside, we've made some signage improvements. We've made some improvements to the paper towel dispensers in there by putting automatic air dryers in there. One of the things I wanted to just highlight is, this picture here, it shows the interior of the door, I know, it's a bathroom door, what the heck? But it was just painted four weeks ago, and you can see already that there's already dirt and kick marks around the door of, or the bottom of the door and around the handles. And that was just painted four weeks ago. So what we're finding is that we have a painting cycle and a renovation cycle on these facilities in about a three to five-year cycle. We're finding out that the usage of the facility has increased to such a point that we have to change the cycle. So we're gonna have to paint almost once a year in certain parts of this facility. Now, in regards to the usage of the facility, yes, there are abuses happening in there with different groups hanging out in the facility, creating vandalism and graffiti issues. And the Parks and PD, they were working together to communicate on those issues and the incidents within that parking structure, and kind of detailed that within the staff report. Now, as a part of improving conditions at the parking structure, we also looked at the camera system and possible upgrades. Now, it is not the intent of the staff report for the council to take action on a system upgrade. The intent is to give the council an order of magnitude for an upgrade. Our initial look into the matter puts the figure in about the $100,000 range. So we wanted to look and see, are we talking $20,000 to do upgrades, are we talking $50,000? The quote we got back, and again, it was a quote, it wasn't an RFP that we were looking at, it's in the $100,000 range. So that concludes my report.
First of all, kudos to you and your staff. You know, I raised the concerns prior and going in there a few times after, it's spectacular, it looks amazing. So, and I went in there like twice, basically one time right after, and then maybe, maybe I think a week after, and it looked great, so I appreciate that. I took a peek at the scope for the camera stuff, and there is, there are some things that I would hope that we could maybe solidify and kind of set a standard going forward for the city to operate. And it ties back into the first subject we were talking about with regards to the smart city and analytics and all that stuff. So there's some open architecture solutions that basically play in the same field and do very different things that we can, we can look at, so hopefully we can, and this was just a mention of it, and I jumped all over it, but it's, you know, I like that we're looking at it, but I think the standard needs to be achieved, but just wanted to give you the.
And that was the intent of getting that quote, was to integrate with the entire city's solutions, so we don't want to stand alone in a silo, we want to work with the city together.
I've got a comment too. I think from what I read in the staff report, you've done a good job cleaning it up and looking for the future. I would only recommend it, whatever, when you put in the systems where we can see who's doing this. I want to be sure we can see who's doing it to the degree that we can prosecute them if we catch them. Okay, I don't want, I don't want to go cheap because we have a limit of something. We're talking about a multimillion-dollar investment to build that parking garage. When you're talking in terms of millions, $100,000 doesn't sound too impressive, okay? And if you need to do $150,000, be sure we catch the people doing that and we stop them from doing that. I think that's a well worth investment, okay? And to make it, there are people, I've been, I've been over there quite often recently using the garage. I find it nice to find a spot most, all the time. But I think that garage should be safe, because sometimes you walk in, it's pretty dark and you never know, especially for women. So I don't think we should go cheap, so I would say you don't have to just throw money away, that's not, that's not our goal in this town. But by the same time, be sure we get the bank for the buck, but don't hesitate. Come to this council, whatever council's in operation at the time, you go to the RFP, if you need more to do it right and at the first time, then come ask, don't be hesitant.
We won't be shy at all. Thank you.
Yeah, and just add my thanks to the quick action on taking care of that, Tim, that was, that was impressive, because I know it kind of got away from us a little bit there. But, you know, I would be a huge advocate for, I think it's an easy case, you know, where we have a real problem area in town. I think the return on investment for surveillance just pays for itself over a relatively short period of time. So I'm one council member that would be very supportive of, you know, at least some initial investment in surveillance in and around that structure, so.
And I'll just add that in part because I know, I bank at Folsom Lake Bank, and I know that I've been witness to tons of kids up there on skateboards in the afternoon, and that's a problem.
Yes.
Did they have pads on and helmets?
I couldn't see them that closely, they were kind of ducking down behind the parapet, so.
They're ducking down behind the eggs they're throwing.
They have helmets on now.
Yeah, thank you, Tim.
It was one of, it was one of Ernie's gangs up there.
We issued parachutes for the top, the top row.
Okay, we're approaching downhill on the content, so we'll go move on to the next item.
Your next item is old business item 9B. This is the 2035 General Plan Approval. You have two resolutions before you tonight, resolution number 10147, approving the 2035 General Plan EIR, Finding Effects and Statement of Overriding Considerations, and resolution number 10148, this would be a resolution approving the 2035 General Plan.
Steve, could I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Could we ask people to let us know if they do or do not live in Folsom? We've gotten a lot of letters and emails from people that don't live here.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Miklos, members of the City Council, Pam Johns, Community Development Director. I'm gonna give a very brief presentation or introduction to the project, and then I'm gonna ask the engineering manager, Mark Rackman, to get up and talk a little bit about level of service, traffic level of service as it relates to the general plan update. And then after the presentation, along with the city's project manager, Scott Johnson, who's our planning manager, and the consultant team led by Chelsea Payne, we'd be happy to answer any questions that the council has. So just as a reminder to the City Council, we are at the final stage of the city's six-year effort to update the general plan which was currently adopted. Thank you, Steve, I got so. general plan which was currently adopted. Thank you, Steve. I got so excited to get up here and gear up that I forgot to start queuing. So, so we have a almost 30-year-old general plan document, and, and there's been a lot of work and effort into getting to where we are today. And we've talked about that at many meetings with this city council, with the public, with stakeholder groups, and commissions that recommend and advise to this city council. And so I've got a slide here that's just a reminder of those meetings over the last two-year period. So in early 2017, we released the, the first draft general plan after a series of, of meetings and key issues discussions. And then since that time, we've really been vetting that with the city's advisory and ultimate decision-makers with the public input in mind. So just a brief summary, we heard over kind of 253 formal written comments on the, on the public draft general plan. And I think Councilmember Sheldon can attest to this, that the vast majority of those comments have been addressed and incorporated into the plan. We also had nine written comments on the EIR document, and we have formal responses to all of those, and that's all part of your, your record. And then in addition, at the meetings that we have held in these final hearings with, with the city council, we received about half a dozen written correspondence that have come before you and, and public testimony. So before you tonight is the final document that represents the culmination of all of that input and certainly the direction and guidance of this city council. At your last meeting in July, July 24th specifically, we talked about comments and direction from the city council at the June 26th meeting. Council confirmed approval of the minor edits and corrections and responses to the questions and comments that had come up at that time. And then Councilmember Gaylord also asked that the council consider maintaining the current level of service C and consider cost implications of doing so. And so since that time, we at a staff level have been meeting with Councilmember Gaylord and providing information back to the city council, and we intend to summarize that, you know, this evening in order for you to consider that request. So with that, I'm going to ask Mark Rackman to get up and go through a series of, of slides on level of service.
Thank you, Pam. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mark Rackman, Engineering Manager with the Public Works Department. So just as Pam mentioned, just a few slides just to get us all on the same page with the topic at hand of level of service, vehicular level of service primarily. So the, in the, in the traffic parlance, level of service is a measure of the amount of, of average traffic delay in an intersection. This is primarily focused on vehicular delay. The, the analysis methodology, you know, summarizes the volume of traffic that is traveling through a given intersection, making the various turning movements or through movements. It does take into account bicycles, pedestrians, and trucks in the, in the traffic flow. And you arrive at a calculated average delay for that hour. And then there's a corresponding table, which I'll show you in a second, that, that defined or assigns a letter grade to various ranges of average delay. And this is normally used to assess your worst traffic conditions, which are primarily your AM commute hour and your PM commute hour on, on weekdays.
Mark, would you repeat that one statement again, because that's a huge factor of what level of service actually means.
Yeah, primarily, we use it looking at the peak hours, your five, generally five to six PM, Monday through Friday. And again, generally, whether it's seven to eight AM or sometimes 6:30 to 7:30, depending on, on what the actual peak is.
And Mark, just to clarify that a little bit further, when you say it's the, it's the peak hour, more often than not, that peak hour happens in the morning and in the afternoon. But as an example, and I'm just going to pick Folsom Middle School, it may be that the peak hour at Folsom Middle School is drop-off time for kids and when the kids get out of school. And I just, but I want people to understand that it is, whatever the one hour a day is, that 60-minute time period that has the highest volume at a given location.
Yeah.
Regardless of which time of day it happens.
Right, and that's a great point. You know, schools peak at different times than the commute period. What's interesting about the schools, since we're on that topic, is they generally have a period of 15 to 20 minutes of intense traffic that is clearly exceeding the capacity of our system. And then after all the parents leave and the students drive away, the traffic reverts back to, you know, nominal traffic flow, if not excellent traffic flow. So if you average that out over the entire hour, you get an acceptable level of service. But for that 20 minutes, it's, we've all been through it, it's terrible.
And just one other thing, too, because I think there's been a fair amount of incorrect information that's been talked about in a variety of different locations. But I want people to understand that this level of service does not account for the fact that you may have to wait 45 seconds or a minute, or sometimes a little bit more than a minute, depending upon the timing of the signal. So this is, this is delay over and above the fact that you had to stop at a light because someone in front of you wanted to turn left, or because someone on another street wanted to drive across the street that you're on. That's very, very important, because it's not simply that I had to listen to half of a song on the radio that I really don't like.
So this is the corresponding chart that I just mentioned, that once you calculate the average delay for that hour, for that, for the intersection you're looking at, these are the ranges of average delay, seconds per vehicle, that equate to a letter grade, you know, with, with A showing the lowest average delay and F being what we consider oversaturation and breakdown flow in excess of 80 seconds per vehicle. And emphasizing the, the use of the term average delay, you can have an intersection that, you know, of the, you know, a four-leg intersection, you have left turns through movements and right turns on four legs. That's 12 possible movements. You could have an intersection that has 11 movements moving with minimal or no delay, but one movement that's experiencing massive delay because of its conflicts with those other movements. That, that particular movement is considered, you know, poor level of service, and that is the letter grade, or that's what affects the, the average delay. You know, we all see East Bidwell-Iron Point, the, the right turn movement from Iron Point onto East Bidwell backs up. That's one particular movement that has a very bad level of service, just as an example. So regionally comparison, you know, Pam mentioned our document is 30 years old. This is our first real opportunity to bring our level of service standard into, not only inconsistency with what others in the region have already done, but to give us a chance to catch up with regulatory and policy issues that have changed over the last 30 years. So for example, you'll see here, there are, there are some cities that have just adopted a flat-out level service E policy, which, if I go back to this chart, is, is saying that your system's operating at capacity. The volume of traffic you're moving is almost exactly hitting the capacity that you're providing. Not the ideal solution, but, but this is a reality that a lot of agencies have confronted. Others that you see have adopted D, and others have maintained a C standard, but they have some exceptions. The Roseville example, level service C at 70% of their intersections, they have over 100 intersections, as I recall, and in speaking with their traffic engineer, they have about 12 intersections that are operating at level service D, E, or F consistently. And, and yet they're still consistent with their policy. And you'll see there are others where there are exceptions, when you're near freeways or river crossings. Trying to acknowledge that those are choke points in your transportation system, because there are so few interchanges along the highway, there's so few river crossings or, you know, bridges across the river, the traffic concentrates at those places, and it hits the capacity very quickly. So this chart compares the current level service C policy in the 1988 general plan versus our proposed for, for looking forward to the year 2030. As of the, the analysis that was done in the current general plan, we have seven intersections that don't meet level service C, and four that, that don't achieve level service D. These are, you know, we all know what they are, East Bidwell and Iron Point, Folsom Auburn-Greenback, Folsom Auburn at Folsom Lake Crossing are probably the three, you know, real lynch points in the, or choke points in the system that, that are failing. Looking forward to the year 2035, there are 20 intersections that will fall below level service D, and nine of those are predicted.
Mark, why does it say 2030?
I'm not sure why. That might be a dis-
Human error.
Okay, thank you.
And nine intersections that would fall below D. Now, this is before mitigations are applied to those intersections.
So what's the, is it just, just below D, so it could be EF, G to Z?
Uh, there are-
There is no G. It only goes to F.
Well, okay. I know it says it on here, I'm just saying it's kind of, it's just odd how it's pronounced or said there, but-
Right, yeah.
And then the mitigations are based upon funding, right? Available funding?
Uh, so yeah, to some extent. Some of them are very straightforward mitigations, very low-cost, others are multimillion.
The way I read that, I thought this was with proposed mitigations in the, on the actual readouts on here. Within the EIR, it shows proposed 2035 mitigation.
Yeah, we, we have, there are about four or five of those nine intersections that we can get either to D or possibly to C with mitigations. But there are, I think there, like I said, there's four or five that, that will not come down to either C or D without extraordinary measures. And I will, I think we'll touch on that in a little bit.
Sure.
Okay. Some other points, you know, again, as Councilmember Gaylord pointed out, that funding is key here. You know, the ability to fund improvements is harder when you're maintaining a higher standard, because you're having to implement more measures, more physical improvements, more technology to try to maximize the flow of the system. That also leads to higher maintenance costs over the lifespan of, of whatever measures you build. Regional competitiveness, this is, again, I pointed out earlier, we haven't updated the standard in 30 years. All the other agencies in our region have. We are not competing regionally for state and local funding sources. Folsom is always at a disadvantage with a lot of these funding sources, because we are an affluent community, we don't compete well with social justice policies, economic disadvantaged policies. So we're already kind of have one arm tied behind our back when we're competing against several other agencies. A higher level of service standard then leads, as I said, to more infrastructure, more technology. And when we're putting ourselves up against other agencies that don't have to demonstrate such a high infrastructure cost, again, we, we tend to lose out because we're, we're asking for more, we're asking to build a larger thing that is inconsistent with active transportation goals, you know, bicycle pedestrian environment, which is my next point here. So again, you know, these are all the factors that, that have contributed to this request to modify the policy. And again, you know, the cost of maintaining level service C, Pam mentioned that we do need to do a, we would need to do a very robust analysis of the system, asking our consultants to dive back into the document and reanalyze the network, assuming a level service C instead of the level service D policy. During Mr. Weir's presentation earlier, he, he mentioned the ITS system and, and our near-term objective of focusing on some of the major arterials, East Bidwell and Folsom Boulevard. And he, you know, the total for that near-term solution was about $6 to $8 million, and we are moving forward with some elements of that. And then physical improvements to 20 intersections. And I have a couple of examples here to show the cost of level service C versus accepting D. So here's one example. The intersection is East Nautoma at Green Valley. We all see it today, the very large, long left turn volume, primarily in the afternoon commute, moving off of East Nautoma onto Green Valley. Clearly, the reason it's there today is because we need to widen Green Valley Road. We need to finish our transportation infrastructure, which will alleviate much of that congestion, not all of it. And the congestion will continue to grow, not only as our city grows, but of course, as El Dorado County and Placer County continue to grow. Most of this movement is not, doesn't have a trip end in the City of Folsom. It's, it's regional traffic going around the corner of the lake. The one movement that clearly fails at this intersection is that eastbound left turn. And as, you know, Mr. Weir and I pointed out earlier, we are already accounting for technological solutions to maximize the efficiency of our system. That alone is not going to make this capacity problem go away. The capacity solution is to widen, to add a third through, left turn lane. Because of the constraints in all the other corners, you know, and this is just a preliminary design, one concept, but it would be to widen into the northwest quadrant of the intersection, using our standard lane widths. And you'll see that we could fit the roadway within, without impacting the building directly. That's the little retail structure where there's a Goodwill, there's a haircut, and a couple other small businesses. But you'll see that there would be no room for a sidewalk, and the building would be not, it would be no longer be in compliance with our setback requirements. It'd be right behind the back of curb. Therefore, there's a possibility that we'd have to acquire some, if not all, of that center. So in, on the inset, you'll see that I've laid out some rough costs at what it would take to plan, design, and construct the intersection. Those alone are in excess of $2 million. And if we had to take the property, you know, it's estimated that it'd be about a $6 million property acquisition, not to mention the loss of, of jobs, the loss of businesses available to the community, and, and the sales tax revenue associated with it. So these, these are the concerns that we have when it comes to trying to maintain a level service C standard versus accepting level service D and preserving the, the scale of the improvements in our community and the quality of life in the community. And so we can focus on those, those four or five intersections that truly demand the most attention. Another example that I'll just go through briefly, this is Folsom Auburn and Greenback. And one of the initial concepts that the consultant team came up with was to do some minor widening and narrower lanes on that north leg of Folsom Auburn Road to create three through lanes through the intersection in both directions and a dual left onto Rainbow Bridge. This project would be, again, fairly minor widening, you know, fairly minimal impacts to adjacent development. It's probably still, with the signal modifications and the widening, it's, it's probably a $2 to $3 million project. That gets you to level service D. In order to get to level service C, let's see if I can get this back, we haven't analyzed that yet. That's part of that, that cost analysis that, that we'd have to have the consultants do. But it's very likely that we'd have to be starting, starting to talk about a grade separation, where one road goes over the other, you know, kind of a small urban interchange. And you can imagine the right-of-way implications to the gas stations in the corner and to the, the open spaces there adjacent to the bridge. So then just finally, I wanted to compare, just for everyone's information, this is the current policy, which says to strive for level service C. It also says that we can allow for temporarily higher levels of service when the roadway improvements have not been adequately phased. So this means that as the entire circulation element for the City of Folsom is, until it's 100% developed, we can accept temporarily higher levels of service. Well, we clearly do not have a fully developed transportation network right now. We're missing two interchanges. We have roadways that haven't been widened out to what the 1988 general plan assumed. And then we've had changes in land use and, and regulatory policies over the last 30 years. And then the new policy is emphasizing striving for level service D, and then we do lay out several conditions where we could accept level service E when we're near those freeway interchanges and river crossings, or where, or where the scale of the improvements just create a detriment to the just create a detriment to the bicycle and pedestrian environment, or to the quality of life in the community, uh, just to paraphrase. Uh, and that concludes my portion of the presentation, I'll turn it back over to Pam unless you have any questions for me right now.
Mike, I get the same comment, I thought we got it picked up, but we didn't. Table 17 dash 6, it still says exiting freeway, and it should say existing.
We didn't modify the environmental document, but we have an errata sheet for anything that's in the policy document-
Okay.
That's a typo, yeah.
Should we, uh-
Yeah, you have a question for me?
I was gonna say, you let public comment first, or?
Oh, we still have some more presentation from staff.
Yeah, thanks, Mark. Um, just, just one other comment in closing before I remind you of our recommendation, and that is that, um, you know, we always say as planners, general plans are general in nature, and while we haven't updated ours-
And they're planned.
And we haven't updated ours in 30 years, but we've, we've taken a good, long look and refreshed the, the document, made important additions and modifications, and made sure that we're in compliance with relevant laws, right? So, so that's the very basic minimum, and we've spent a lot of time massaging the language. At the end of the day, there are dozens of documents that implement this policy, so, so the general plan is general in nature because the details are borne out in lots and lots of implementation plans, and I want to just name a few of those for the council and members of the public to remind you about that, because a lot of these come before you more often than every 25 or 30 years, right? So you're looking at zoning code amendments, specific plans, parks master plan, bike, ped and trail master plan, something that was discussed earlier this evening, the intelligent transportation system master plan, fire service delivery systems. So there are dozens of plans, and they're all outlined in the implementation portion of the policy document, so it directs regular creation and update of these documents that go into more detail that's intended to implement the vision and policies of your general plan. So I'll just keep that in mind, ask you to keep that in mind as we're talking about the, the general plan update this evening, and, um, remind you that both staff and the planning commission, by a vote of 4-3, recommend that the council approve the general plan, adopt the general plan essentially, and certify the environmental document. So, we're available to answer any questions.
Do you have a question, Pam?
I'll save it for now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions, staff? Before we open the public hearing, we do have 12?
12 or 13 now.
13 requests to speak, uh, you do get three minutes, and again, I'm gonna request very strongly, if you want to speak on this item, I'm gonna give you, uh, say a three-minute window right now, we'll call a three-minute recess, uh, to put your requests in, and after we come back from a three-minute recess, then, uh, we're not gonna accept any more because I'm gonna need to obviously balance the time, balance the, the schedules and everything so we can, uh, hear everybody, then we have to have time to deliberate and, and answer questions and so on and so forth. So, we're gonna take a three-minute recess, 'cause I know a few of us, myself included, need to stand up, um, so please, if you do have some, turn it in now, thank you. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna go ahead and restart the city council meeting. You take your seats. Let's go ahead and get restarted.
Hurry up, 'cause you're ruining my ears.
Yeah, Vice Mayor says hurry up because my gavel's ruining his ears. So with that, Pam, you have further, uh, things you want to point out for, uh, okay, so-
Ignore me.
Before we start taking, uh, public testimony, I know my colleague, Vice Mayor Sheldon, and my councilmember colleague, Roger Gaylord, had a couple things they want to throw out for us up here as well as you out there before I open up the public hearing and take testimony, so, Mr. Vice Mayor-
Okay, I've, uh-
Turn your mic on.
Yep. Well, first of all, I want to thank the, uh, colleagues for giving us, uh, giving me more time to read this, and I'm tired of carrying this thing around, I can tell you that. I considered the work being comp, uh, claimed against the city for making me carry it around, but, uh, I'll postpone that for later. But by having another chance of going through and reading it, and one area did jump at me more than anything else, it was in the, um, area of the River District, the proposed, uh, that, uh, basically came out of the chamber. Um, I attended all their, their sessions, I think they did a professional job, uh, Wilkington kept it going well, which is typical Wilkington, um, he's an excellent executive, but I did want to make a statement that I think should be made, uh, as to what is in the general plan as it stands now. I'd like to substitute a word, in, in the master plan, it talks about a River District, uh, words to the effect that we would prepare one, and I think what we really need to say is we need to consider preparing one, because I-
Ernie, just clarification, are you talking about plan?
Yeah.
No, you just, you said make a River District, and I think you really mean a plan.
Now, wait, you confuse me now.
There's no requirement to actually create a River District, I think it was about planning?
Well, no, that's, that's my, uh, that's my words, is I think it was too much implied that it was a foregone conclusion that we would plan it, and what I wanted to say to my, um, my recommendation is that we consider-
A River District master plan.
Correct, and that it's not something that is going to go. Now, the logic would say, if the council, in effect at the time, whichever one, when it becomes an item to really discuss, which it is not right now, uh, would certainly go back and look at what has been done by the expenditure and the efforts on the part of the chamber, it would be stupid not to do that. However, it's not that we have to do that, the council will dictate if they feel it's necessary, their own plan, and that's what I wanted to say in the, um, in this master plan, right now, I didn't want no, uh, I, if I was sitting on this council, which I probably will not, 'cause it won't come before in my two years, I would not want somebody to come and say, "Well, it's in the plan, therefore we're going to do it." No, you're not, that, no, we're gonna, the council in effect at the time has to make that recommendation. So, that's, that's basically what I'm saying is, um, and I can provide better data to, to that, so, is it up there?
Right there.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I, uh, we, I did meet with the planning director and this, and the, uh, city manager on this, and I think what Pam put up there is adequate as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, right now, the policy just reads, "Prepare a River District master plan," and the modification would be, "Consider the preparation of," which council member Sheldon, um, said is important to him in order to make sure that any direction for that preparation would come back before this body, um, for direction to proceed without the presumption that it would just move forward.
That's correct.
Okay.
And we have discussed that change with the city attorney, and making that change would not, uh, trigger a need for a revision to the EIR and a recirculation.
Very important.
That's correct, thank you. Uh, madam, the, allow me to just point the council to your staff report, page number 399, that's where the, uh, general plan policy on River District appears, that's what's on the, uh, screen.
Okay.
Okay. I'm satisfied, thank you.
Okay.
I do you too.
Mr. Gaylord, when you're ready?
Alrighty. So, I started this, and contrary to some public testimony, I don't post inaccurate facts, I post legitimate concerns for residents that are top priorities for quality of life, so, um, maybe based upon semantics of whether an intersection is an intersection, but an F is an F. Um, I simply can't accept Es or Fs, and I won't vote for Es or Fs, so, um, I thank city staff, we had a, a couple of meetings and probably about 52 emails going back and forth on maybe some accepted verbiage of what I can accept as a standard, and to, uh, propose an augmentation of M 4.3.1, and it reads as followed, uh, strive to, I don't know if I'm telling you to read it, strive to achieve at least a level of, a traffic level of service D or better for local streets and roadways throughout the city, in designing transportation improvements, the city will prioritize use of smart technologies and innovative solutions that maximize efficiencies and safety while minimizing the physical footprint. During the course of the plan build-out, it may occur that temporary higher, temporarily higher levels of service result where roadway improvements have been adequately phased as development proceeds. However, this situation will be minimized based off annual traffic studies and monitoring programs. Staff will report to the city council at regular intervals via capital improvement programs or CIPs, uh, process for the council to prioritize projects integral to achieving a level of service D or better. So, with that, I, I am, I'm comfortable with assuring that the city council is able to hold higher standards, they're able to, um, ensure, you know, proper mitigations and impact fees are paid their way so that, you know, when, when developments come, this is, this is a, a, a community that's worth investing in, and I want to make sure those are, um, held, and I don't want to see Es, Fs and lower standards. So, I, again, I appreciate all the work, Elaine, Pam, you, you, we were going back and forth like crazy, so I, I absolutely appreciate that, and everyone on the DIAS, I appreciate, um, letting me kinda, you know, go on a tangent on this one, but that's what we landed on at this point.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Gaylord, um, I did want to comment on this as well, that, um, this one does not re, uh, trigger, uh, a revision or a recirculation of the EIR, so which saves us, you know, over $200,000 in nine months of work at least.
So just for the sake of, uh, people coming up to speak, um, I'm comfortable, quite comfortable with, uh, both, uh, Ernie and Roger's, um, proposed revisions there. Carrie, any comment before I start opening up?
No, as long as we're not going to C and spending $200,000, nine months and 80 million bucks.
I have to thank Ernie and Roger because I think both of these are in line with what our policies have been. Uh, I think the presentations by the planning director and certainly their transportation senior engineer, or whatever guru we call you today, Mark, acting public works director today, anyways, uh, I think these are both great compromises because again, at the end of the day, it doesn't preclude us from being flexible, and Pam started to say at the very beginning, a general plan is a living document. Uh, a lot of people have watched this community over the years, you've seen us do general plan revisions, zoning code changes, et cetera, et cetera, as she pointed out. This, I think, is, again, saying, we may have some issues down the line, but we've made it very clear those issues need to come in from the city council, and then of course, we're gonna strive right away to mitigate and try to strive for that policy. So I think that level of service policy, and I believe, um, Mr. Vice Mayor, your language with the, the staff that you guys worked out, it doesn't preclude anybody from considering either doing a master plan, but we want to, I agree with you when you say, "Hey, but it's in a document, you gotta do it." It doesn't say we won't do it, it says when it's considered, especially if it's run by us, that's one thing, certainly private entities can do their own thing and present to the city council, but I think the compromise is to make everybody comfortable, that's been going on around the community for a number of weeks and months regarding level of service, let alone the part, the River District, I think these are excellent compromises, so I have no issue with them as well. So folks that are out here to talk about some of these two issues, if you like the language and you choose not to, when you hear your name called, say, "I'm good," or come up and say, "Kudos, thank you, ditto," whatever, that's fine. One thing we do have in this chamber, in case you haven't been in here a while, if you want to clap for somebody, let's get all your claps out now, if you want to boo for somebody, we don't allow that because it's disrespectful. So if anybody wants to clap about anything, let's get it out of our system now, because again, we have at least an hour plus worth of speaker requests, plus our deliberation time. So, again, uh, please be respectful, and if we can do that in an efficient manner, that'd be wonderful, because we'd like to hear anybody and everybody that wants to speak. We do have a three-limit timeout, but again, if you want to be efficient and say, "I don't need to speak based on some of the two compromises up here," if you have other items, certainly, you know, take your time, we, we have your card available to us. So with that, let's go ahead and call the speakers.
Okay, your first speaker tonight will be Mike Barnbaum, Mike will be followed by Fred Kendall.
And again, if you get your name called, please be in the queue over here on the side to, to, to follow next the current speaker. Good evening again, Mike.
Good evening again, thank you. Um, so we've been through the general plan quite a bit, uh, prior to and even since the, uh, late night, uh, service additions on, on the Gold Line, and thankfully, uh, and hopefully, tonight is, uh, the, the final, um, discussion and adoption based on the staff recommendation. Uh, I wanted to go back for a moment and kind of stress a bit what Coco's, uh, comments were a bit earlier, uh, specifically on her comment of, uh, service frequency on, on the 10 and the services that are the responsibility today of, uh, the city of Folsom. Um, you know, in the past, I worked, uh, quite a bit on that with, uh, former public works director, Rich Lorenz, and, uh, former transit director, Kent Gary. Um, there need, and needs to be, to her point, uh, some improvements on the Folsom stage line system, uh, hopefully it can be incorporated, uh, as far as their own levels of service into the general plan, uh, and be a key component of circulation, uh, throughout the city of Folsom, but connecting to, uh, points within, uh, our, our own region, uh, specifically to places where the Gold Line does not travel to. Um, connections out to Orange Vale and Citrus Heights and, uh, up Folsom Auburn Road into parts of Placer and Eldorado County would, uh, be very helpful, uh, when studying what improvements through a comprehensive analysis that those need to be made and incorporated into tonight's item. Uh, but in having a, a brief conference with, uh, the city manager, just in, in generally speaking of, of this item, and with as much time that has been spent on it, um, I, I did ask, "Do you want it that way?" And the answer was, "I want it that way."
Wow, serenade for Mike, cool.
Move the item.
Yeah, thanks, Mike, I appreciate it, man, as always.
Your next speaker tonight is Fred Kendall, Fred is followed by Jobecca Trotta.
Jobecca, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Fred Kendall, uh, I live here in Folsom. I wanna, I want the general plan for 2035 to be successful. I note the city council is being asked to sign a statement of overriding considerations for several significant adverse impacts that are unmitigated. These unmitigated impacts mean that we, 75,000 people that live in this city now are gonna suffer from the unmitigated impacts. This does not seem fair to our community. I believe we can do better than this. I have a suggestion on how we can do better than this. I suggest the city council approve an addition to the mitigation monitoring and adaptive management plan in the environmental impact report. This addition would have six elements. City council appoint a citizens committee to continue to review and seek to improve the mitigation of the unmitigated impacts. The citizens committee will continue over the next few years while the developments of the general plan are being built. Three, the citizens committee will seek advice from experts on these impacts and where feasible and cost-effective, recommend to city council the best ideas. Citizens committee will report progress and any recommendations periodically to city council, perhaps two or three times a year. City council would consider these reports and recommendations and approve any that the city council believes appropriate. And six, the city council would direct staff to include the approved recommendations to ongoing developments within the general plan. Staff would work with developers for implementation. I believe in this way the city council can do better than this, and lessen those unmitigated impacts, uh, for our town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, your next speaker is Aaron Rawls, Aaron will be followed by Deborah Grassel.
Hello, Aaron Rawls, 30-year Folsom resident, I, I originally did come up to speak in regards to the level of service, and with the revised policy addition, I'm extremely happy with that, and I'd like to thank you all for it, we needed it, thanks a lot.
Great, thank you, Aaron.
Now that's efficiency.
Okay, Deborah Grassel, and Deborah will be followed by Pat Binley.
Good evening, council, um, kudos to Roger and to Ernie, I think that- I think that the two considerations that you have offered really help a great deal to mitigate some of the effects of the 2035 general plan. The state of California, we know, is putting pressure on cities to develop more housing, especially affordable housing, and so is the Sacramento Area Council of Government, SECOG. There isn't anyone in this room that doesn't know that, and who doesn't also know that Folsom needs more housing, especially affordable housing, and we support that. The 2035 general plan is supposed to guide this process with our health, safety, and welfare in mind. So three alternatives were developed for the general plan and compared, in order to find the best way to accomplish the general plan's vision of the build-out. The law states that this comparison has to be accomplished in order to find out what kind of environmental impacts each alternative would entail. Then the city council could choose the most feasible alternative to guide the general plan's vision, but none of the alternatives, when compared, were feasible. In the findings on feasibility, there's a statement acknowledging the city council knows all three of the alternatives are infeasible. Still, alternative three was chosen. Alternative three has 17 significant unmitigatable environmental impacts in violation of the general plan that it is supposed to support. My colleague Terry Sorenson and I lettered the council on additional legal deficiencies and conflicts between the general plan and the statement of overriding considerations, as well as the alternative number three, and the unmitigatable environmental impacts, and they have yet to be addressed. We came to city council meetings, and we did not get a call back, we didn't get a letter, didn't get an email, and we think that these are pretty serious problems with the general plan, with the EIR, with the statement of overriding considerations, and the findings bear that out. We can do better than this, we must do better than this. The quality of our lives of the people who live in the community depend on the benefits that the new 2035 general plan will bring, as well as protections from legal inconsistencies and unmitigatable environmental impacts. So please, consider postponing the approval of this 2035 general plan until new work sessions can create an alternative four to build out the general plan's vision. Thank you.
Okay, your next speaker is Pat Binley. Pat will be followed by Will Kempton.
Good evenings, Mr. Mayor, city council members. I'm a little premature tonight, because I wanted to thank Mr. Miklos and Andy Moran for your service.
Thank you.
And also, I just wanted to say something about the River District, so I don't know if that's appropriate anymore.
Yeah.
Okay. I was troubled by the fact that this River District proposal would be part of the general plan, and so much of the land is outside of our boundaries. That part bothered me, so.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you, Pat, thank you for your comment.
Next is Will Kempton, and Will will be followed by Rob Ross.
As some of you may know, I was in fact a registered lobbyist for 11 years when I was in private practice, and one of the first rules that you learn is that if it appears you have the vote, shut up and sit down. And I commend the entire council, frankly, on the collaboration among the members and with staff. But I did want to make a few points representing the general, the Greater Folsom Partnership, and we do support approval of the general plan, as we've said on a number of occasions before you, and we think it's a comprehensive and thorough document that really does a good job of laying out the future for Folsom. In terms of the level of service and the traffic issues, I think that's a great solution that you've come up with. I think it certainly maintains a reasonable approach to trying to balance congestion and some other practical factors. The River District is another issue of great concern to us. We can certainly concur with the language that Ernie and the rest of the council have agreed upon tonight, in terms of moving forward with that document, should the council choose to pursue that. There was a comment from the Folsom Fire Safe Council urging the city to complete a comprehensive hazard and risk assessment plan, fuel management plan, and evacuation plan for the River District as part of any necessary environmental documentation, given the situation that we have in California with all of the wildfires and the dangers that exist, whatever the cause, we certainly can support that suggestion. Finally, with respect to the comments that you've received from the Save the American River Association and others, including the previous speaker relative to the jurisdictions of, and the oversight of other agencies, I think the general plan is very clear with respect to a requirement that there has to be coordination and collaboration with the Bureau of Reclamation, with the State Department of Parks and Recreation, with the County of Sacramento, and this is very clear. We understand, in the River District Community Workshop effort, we repeatedly stated our recognition of that fact, that whatever comes out of a River District master plan that the city pursues or chooses to pursue, will have to be consistent with either the existing plans, or there will have to be an amendment process pursued in order to add some of the things that may be in conflict with what is in those plans. And I would point out that it was very interesting with our effort that of 17 amenities that we discussed as part of the community workshops, 10 of them were consistent with the plans of the State Department of Parks and Recreation, and I think that that's important, because another thing that has been suggested is that we need to be focused on that. We agree. We think that regardless of the progress that is made in terms of developing a River District, we ought to begin immediately, and we intend to advocate for improvements that are included in those plans, to see if we can assist in the funding and the implementation of what has already been proposed in 2010.
I need you to wrap it up for me.
Pardon me?
I need you to wrap it up for me.
Okay, one more statement, and that is that we will be working with you and the city, moving forward to see if we can't have an early implementation of a River District master plan effort, recognizing that that's the city's responsibility, and we're happy to provide input in the process. Thank you.
Very good comment, thank you. Yeah?
Hey, Will.
Will.
Mr. Kempton.
I just had a quick question.
I just wanted to say, you don't need to come back up, I just wanted to thank you for your community output and having the many gatherings and public notices you've done, you and your whole team has really made, you know, a public awareness of what you're trying to establish, and the vision is good, so thank you. Appreciate that.
One thing that Will hadn't mentioned is that the majority of Lake Natoma is in the city of Folsom, city limits, so that's a very huge distinction, and most people don't even know. Well, thank you.
Okay, your next speaker is Rob Ross, and Rob will be followed by Scott Bailey.
Mr. Mayor, council?
Rob?
I just have a forward-looking statement regarding the River District tonight. I did have a statement on traffic, but I echo the improvements there, and I think it's a great way forward and a great collaboration between everyone. So I wanted to express my support for the River District and the general plan, as it demonstrates that the river is an important part of Folsom's future. We currently lack access directly to the water from our trails, and there's almost no place on the south side of the river for people to gather and enjoy wildlife, interact with the water, or simply sit down and just enjoy the scenery. With all the divisiveness within our community about population growth in the city, a River District holds the key to ensuring that Folsom maintains its small-town feel, regardless of the number on our population sign. Our river is the perfect place to invest in outdoor gathering spaces, where people really want to go. See, these gathering places, they promote accidental meetings between neighbors, acquaintances, and friends, and when you run into a neighbor unexpectedly, we unknowingly create a tighter community bond, and it's these bonds that keep our city small. Our river is arguably Folsom's biggest asset, and yet it's one of our most ignored. Thank you.
Next is Scott Bailey, and Scott will be followed by Candy Miller.
I was going to, so I'll pass.
Okay, thank you, Candy. So Scott will be followed by Chad Vanderveen.
Scott Bailey, 32-year Folsom resident and 35-year employee, retired, council members and Mr. Mayor. Not long ago, I sat right over there, in that uncomfortable green chair, in uniform for these proceedings. For the last five years, watching from a quite unique position, I witnessed all the issues and proceedings brought before this council, five of the six years in which we've discussed the 2035 master plan. On many occasions, I wanted to add my two cents to the issues of the time, but was unable. Well, now I can. I've read the 2035 general plan and found it to be an absolutely amazing document. I'm very comfortable in the realization that this is a plan for the future, that it will no doubt be changed and modified as situations arise. I'm impressed and very pleased to see the results of such careful, thoughtful, and diligent planning. My hat is off to the council members, city staff, consultants, experts, and especially the citizens that came to so many public workshops, whose input greatly contributed to this plan. As written, and with the modifications made tonight, which I completely agree with, I'm confident that the city will, the city that we all love, will continue into a very bright and comfortable future, where we can all continue to enjoy our Folsom quality of life. To the council, I say thank you for your talent, wisdom, and expertise while navigating this open and transparent process to its successful conclusion. For the citizens of Folsom, I urge you to adopt the 2035 master plan as written. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can somebody make that screen stop flashing?
I was just going to say, I'm going to reboot the projector, so don't mind that the screen's going to go up and down. Sorry. Next speaker is Chad Vanderveen, and Chad will be followed by Betsy Wieland of Save the American River.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name's Chad Vanderveen, Folsom resident since 2002. Our city is about to go a pretty significant change, as the South 50 build-out continues, and our growth will fundamentally reshape what we all know is a worsening problem in town, and that's traffic, and as such, I don't think we should so easily allow a reduction in the level of service. I believe doing so risks putting the city on a slippery slope, in which it becomes ever easier and ever more permissible to allow our standards for what is acceptable to decay. I did enjoy hearing the presentation on ITS tonight. I've been fortunate enough in my career to have studied and written about ITS at great length, and there are truly tremendous possibilities on the horizon for cities that genuinely buy into the smart city concept, but it will take significant investment and integration of systems. But I know all of us here tonight no doubt place tremendous value on keeping Folsom's character intact, and Mr. Rackvan did a great job of outlining the challenges of maintaining a Level C standard, but I was particularly interested in the standards of other cities in the region, and I was reminded of what Councilman Sheldon said earlier tonight. Let's not simply be average, let's be better. Thank you.
Next speaker is Betsy Wieland, and Betsy is followed by Morgan Daradef.
You can pull that down if it's easier for you, so we can hear you and actually get you on record, too.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember Miklos. Could you please put up the amendment proposed, the amendment language proposed by Councilmember Sheldon?
She's booting the system right now. Do you want to let the other speaker go while she reboots the system, if you need that language up there? Why don't we do it, so why don't you sit in the front there?
Does she want the traffic language?
No, she wants the River District language. So the next speaker is?
Morgan Daradef.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I've been a resident of Folsom for about the last eight years. You know, attending this meeting, I really appreciate the complexity of the issues in front of you. I definitely don't envy your position at all.
Are you sure you don't want to change seats?
Not yet.
Okay.
I'm encouraged by the revision that was able to be made on the traffic level of service. Traffic is a very high priority to me, as is, you know, the amount of development going on. Unfortunately, that's still a little bit discouraging to me, and I hope future development will be done in a responsible and careful manner. Keep this short, definitely appreciate the revisions that you guys were able to make, and I'd like to thank Councilman Gaylord in particular for making information about this meeting available in a forum that was easy for me to find, as well as monitor, and would encourage others to reach out to the community in any way that makes it easy for us to find information and get involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out.
Yeah, it should work.
There you go.
Okay, there we go. Thank you, appreciate that. My name is Betsy Wieland, and I'm here representing Save the American River Association this evening, and we do have very, we have members in Folsom who are very passionate and active as, but I am also here representing all of our members throughout the region, and I'm hoping, and I think by your comments already, that you do appreciate the fact that you are receiving comments from all over the region, because it is Lake Natoma, our American River Parkway, and this is a state park, the lands are owned by the federal government, a lot of them, so this, these, even though they're within the city limits, and we face the same thing in Rancho Cordova, frankly, this, this park, these lands, this lake, they belong to the people of the region, the state, and the nation. And when we develop plans, and we have robust plans, American River Parkway Plan, as well as the Folsom Lake State Recreation Area Plan, when we develop these plans over the years that they take, and the millions of dollars that they take, we don't discriminate when we receive comments. If we receive comments from Southern California, from the city of wherever, or we consider the plant, their comments, because these are the people's parks. So I thank you for receiving all the emails that you received and for giving them consideration. I'd also like to say that the three workshops that were held were very well-done. We attended all three, we had great participation, and really lively, good discussion, and I appreciate that. So, to more concrete now, item, thank you, Councilmember Sheldon, for the proposed language. If I might just ask, how do you consider this playing out? When you put, consider the preparation, what, does this become a policy that substitutes for another policy, and then how do you go through and make the language all consistent with the mitigations and the policies in regards to the River District that are in the general?
Can I try to start to answer that question, only because I didn't go to all three of them, but I did go to two?
Okay.
And I think, Betsy, where this is really coming from, is that Ernie's concern was he didn't want there to be a mandate in the general plan?
Right.
That the master, that a master plan for the River District must get done. Okay, but I think the plus side of this whole discussion that's been going on for the better part of a year has been that the city of Folsom, Greater Folsom Partnership, at the behest of Claudia Cummings, who's in the room tonight, your name came up quite a bit at the last meeting, Claudia, and nobody knew who you were, so I had to explain. I think it was important for the people in Folsom and the people that are interested in what happens at Lake Natoma, to come together and have a discussion about it, and that discussion, it was great that the state parks were so involved in it, because up until the very recent past, they were not. The state parks has had a plan for Lake Natoma for a very long time, and absolutely nothing has been done. So I think if nothing else, this opened up the engagement and the discussion between the people that live closest to the lake and the people that ideally are controlling the park in which the lake sits. So I think if for no other reason, it's a really good opening to do things like the boat launch and some of the other, the 10 things that everybody agreed on. Now there's a little bit of incentive for, you know, there to be a little bit of push and pull to actually get some of that stuff done.
Now it's my turn.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you, Ernie.
I refer to the ladies first, you know, that's it.
Thank you, Ernie.
It's an old, old custom that I learned a long time ago. I don't disagree with what, you know, she said, okay? Carrie understands what it's coming from. I think if we have anything to apologize I think if we have anything to apologize in the city to is that we haven't earlier extended the, maybe a little forcefully, our efforts to work with the state to get them to do what they say they want to do, okay? We, we've had some workshops and some work programs, they used to call it trails, we used to go out in state parks and build bridges and all that stuff, and then they didn't maintain them. So we didn't make a good attitude on our part. But really, when you, what, what I'm representing by asking not to consider what was in the plan a mandate, because it isn't a mandate from a private organization. In the chamber, in the greater partnership, it is in fact a private organization. They are not elected officials. They don't make the final decision. They certainly influence them. Sometimes I may consider them more than they should. But what they did was good because it got the people that have a different outlook. When Rob comes up and says the river is underutilized, I don't think the River American Association would consider that a valid statement. But if you look from where they may be coming from, and we have to, from an economic development, from a commercial, from a business, yeah, maybe they do figure there's more commercial could go on that riverfront. But then again, environmentalists, recreational people may not agree. So all I'm saying, I didn't want that, this general plan to go, maybe we'd come back and say, well, it's in the plan, now we got to do it. No, no. It's in the consideration and all the work, and I commented, World runs a real good shop. I've worked with him for years, I know his talent. It's a good starting point, when and if we're ready to do it, and that will be years down the road, okay? He mentioned he wants to start earlier. Well, maybe, maybe not. But you remember out of the, when the percentages that came out, eighty-eight percent of the people that, that voted at those meetings did not recommend commercialization at all. They were talking about more or less environmental amenities and amenities for kids and education and teaching and respecting the historical aspects of a town that we don't really do as good as we can do. But that was good because by meeting that, you heard a representation of the people, okay? And so that's fine. There's going to be different camps, okay? And the, and the end result of those different camps discussion, discussions, is that we come up with what's best for the citizens of this town, period. That's the only overriding factor, okay? If it's commercialization, we'll go that way. If it's not, we won't go that way. But that's going to be up to the people in this town, the 70,000 people we referred to, okay? They own that land, basically some of the land, okay? So that's all I was asking, just a clarification in the general plan, that somewhere down the road, somebody comes and says, well, it's in there, now we have to do it. No, 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 no. Whatever council is in effect at that time, the city council, they'll, they'll make that call, okay? They'll make the call if and they want to do it. If they want to do it, they'll do, basically, I would assume the same thing that the chamber did, that World did, okay? But they'll do it from a city direction. We run the government, like it or not. Everybody up here is elected to run this city, okay? And I hope we do a good job. We try, I know. Sometimes we blow it, but that's, that's going to happen. But that's, that was my attempt to, to qualify on the master plan, and that I think is what I represent on my side of the, of the picture.
So, so where does this get in? I guess back to my question, which I wasn't clear about, I don't think, is where does this get inserted in the general plan?
We're going to answer those rather than going back and forth all night on the main speaker. We'll answer those questions.
Okay, so, okay, fine.
Pam, excuse me, Pam, on that one, so when we, when we finish the speakers, if you can answer some of these, that would be wonderful.
It goes in right where it says, general plan policy, L U five point one point two.
Thank you, Carrie.
You're welcome.
Okay. And then also, I, just one more quick point. Thank you for the discussion. I'm glad that the Folsom Community Partnership is looking right now at talking to state parks and maybe working with them on this plan, what's in this plan, where there's common, you know, common ground and agreement on finding some ways to help implement what, what has already been, you know, studied and consensus has been built around, and, and maybe we can get something going that way without waiting on some other study.
Okay.
So thank you very much, much appreciated your time and attention and consideration.
Thank you. As, as before we call next speaker, just for everybody to know out there, this effort didn't start a year ago, and I can't remember, maybe Mr. Kempden, I don't know if Paul Romero was in the audience, it's hard to see. We actually met with Major General, and I forgot his, his name at the time, who was running California State Parks and Recreation. He was hired by Governor Brown to implement Governor Brown's policy, to which also the people voted on an issue that was on the ballot, I think in 2012. We met with him in 2013 to start the phase and process of a River District to meet the governor's policy, which was access of the people to the waterways of California. He recognized, the governor did, there was too many restrictions on the people of California to get to the waterways that were set aside by state parks and recreation, and he wanted to try to find a policy, a procedure to allow more access. We got great cooperation when we did the trail. That was one of, one of Robert's, I would say jewels, to allow the trail connection, especially for the ADA complaint and a few other amenities. That, to me, was the first significant improvement under the governor's policy to, to allow Californians access to the river. From there and through discussions, it, it has now evolved into exactly what the Folsom Partnership is doing, for all the reasons everyone has said was, we had this jewel, the state has this master plan, they're not going anywhere with it, so how can we, under the governor's proposal of, and the initiative by the citizens on the ballot that year, implement that plan? So that's why we've been taking this to another step. And I do appreciate and applaud the Greater Folsom Partnership and the community attending those workshops, because that's just another phase of something the government wanted to implement that, that is one policy of his I absolutely do agree with very strongly, because it is our lake, it is our open space, it was a nice camping area, it was a nice place for jamborees, for Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, et cetera, et cetera. And as it was pointed out, and that's why I like this language in here, because to consider, because I think at the proper time, when a group that's involved in the deep engagement they are, not only with the community but with state parks, can bring something that already 10 of the ones they're proposing are 10 of the ones that are in the state parks' master plan that haven't been touched for years and years and years, and we're concerned about the continued degradation of some of those facilities, especially Negro Bar. I mean, it's a hazard just driving through their parking lot, let alone, I don't even want to discuss restrooms, we already had that discussion tonight earlier about our parking structure. We took care of it, they have it. I know they're short, and I know the funding's an issue, but that's no excuse when it's been going on for a better part of 10 years. So I appreciate everybody's comments on it, but that's also why we've considered the, this way it is in, in the general plan, because that is a huge consideration for this community and the region. Perfect example is the fact that we, as a city, offered to help clear out the boulders that are keeping the bike trail closed, because there was a, an impasse between state parks and Caltrans on how to open that bike way back up. I know Robert was very instrumental in some of the plans he laid out that we could do. And again, we got an impasse, so we're stepping up as a community to see what we can do to make that amenity accessible for all. And again, we will work within, you see the agencies up on the screen, to make that happen, because it is our amenity. And I say ours, it's the regions, it's the state, it's even the federal governments, but they have to allow us access and enjoyment. So I, I agree with everyone's comments that it's a jewel, we're going to preserve it, and we're going to do it right, because you only got one shot to do it right. We're going to be slow and deliberate and do it right. So I think that, to me, is the overriding consideration of this language and also the efforts of the Folsom Greater Partnership. So I wanted to get that out, because I didn't want anyone thinking, this is suddenly just cropped up in a day. This has begun on, going on for, I would, I think I've put it down, it was either 2013, could be even late 2012. We're that forward-thinking already, so with that, we'll call the next speaker.
Your next speaker is Kevin Mallory, and Kevin will be followed by Tom Biglion.
I have no need to speak after the staff and this council raised.
I like his efficiency. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. So Tom Biglion will be our final speaker tonight.
I'm quite satisfied with the change in wording and with your recent comments.
Oh, well, thank you. Okay.
So you have no further request to speak on this item?
Anybody have any further questions? And for the record, that was a public hearing, so if we see no other requests or people rushing the dais to get one last word in, I'm going to go ahead and close that public hearing. I think there's a couple of questions that Pam, I don't think we need to answer, because I think the general plan was identified. I don't know if she had any additional questions. I think that she just wanted to know where it was being inserted, and it's identified up there, as far as the park.
Yeah, exactly. And when, when the council members raised their respective issues, we talked about the changes to the existing policy, so the reference is up there. We have the existing document if anybody wants to see it.
Okay. Well, it's the council's turn for deliberation, so who would like to start? Anybody? Roger?
I think I've said my piece, and I appreciate everyone's work, just put, all the work you put into, you know, especially your team and the consultants, and, you know, it is a fine document. I had my issues, and they have been resolved at this point, so I'm, I'm quite satisfied. Thank you.
Andy or Carrie?
Yeah, I'll just jump in. Said a lot last time this was before us, but, you know, just a matter of some perspective. I guess first of all, I want to thank the people that worked on the general plan 30 years ago. You know, I've been here about 30 years, and, boy, I, I like the way this city's developed in the last 30 years. And I think all of us feel that same sense of responsibility, that, you know, this is a, a document that's a framework for the future of this community. And, you know, a lot of this has been discussed, how much time's been put into this. So my thanks to everybody who's, who's researched this, deliberated, built the document. It is, it is a lot of stuff here. And, and I think my, just my last final comment is it is a framework. I mean, we do periodically go through general plan amendments, because things get thrown at us that we couldn't have possibly anticipated. And there's some good examples of that. When the Folsom Dam Road was closed in 2003, there was a lot of scrambling that went on, and we, when we talk about how we're going to pay for stuff, and this community's actually been very good at figuring that out. And, and in that example, I know the sitting city council, and I was new, so I didn't have any real hand in that at the time, but, you know, partnering with our congressional folks, and I know Steve and Carrie were instrumental in getting back there, but also our Sacramento Transportation Authority, I know a big chunk of money came out of that Measure A renewal. So.
Twenty million, twenty million dollars.
There, there's a lot of heavy lifting that this community can do when it needs to get done, and I have no doubt that we're going to have challenges, and we, you know, certainly talk about traffic and interchanges that need to be built. But I've seen it in the past, and I'm confident I'll see it in the future, is this community's ability to put together financing packages that mitigate a lot of, of things over time. So, so again, my thanks to, you know, everybody who's contributed to this, and this is a big moment in the city. I, I don't think a, a lot of people understand, you know, how big this is, but in, in my mind, it is exceptionally well done, and I look forward to living here another 30 years and seeing how this one works out. But I will not be sitting here, I'll be sitting out there. So, but, but thank you, everybody, for all the work.
Again, I want to thank all the, all the folks that have been working on this for the past six years. Sorry that the whole discussion about the traffic level of service got to be so vitriolic, both here and in a number of other locations, but I'm happy that we got to where we are because the level of service fee was just not going to work for me on a, on a personal level, because I know what it means, and I understand that a few minutes' worth of waiting is, to me, is much better than 80 to 100 million dollars' worth of expenditure and additional concrete and asphalt, because I don't think that's the, the Folsom quality of life, and I don't want to lose buildings and trees and all the, the rest that would have gone along with that. So I'm glad that we found, finally found a resolution on that. I think this is a great document. I know how much work went into this, not just on the part of the, of the consultants who, you know, were getting their checks over that time period, but all the blood, sweat, and tears that our staff has put into this over many, many, many years, and especially in the last year. So I'm really happy that we've got to this place, and I'll hopefully be sitting out in the audience with Andy 30 years from now and complaining about the 20, the 2065 general plan, so.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
I don't want to go into the 30-year business. A couple weeks ago, Carrie, at a football game, advised me not to go, come to these things in a wheelchair. She says she didn't want to see me at 100, up at the podium raising hell.
You'll only be 113.
I know. You know, some of us that were involved back in the late 80s, early 90s, I, I love to see the young people, you know? I'm really, I'm old, but I'm not old in my mind, I'm just old in my body. I like young people to get involved, and back in the 80s, I was a lot younger than I am today. And we had these problems, okay? We had traffic problems. We had a, a certain man in the back started an initiative on no growth. He changed, but he started it. So we talked about no growth, we didn't want nothing here and all that, and we had a, a plan that the council put together in 88, and it seemed to have done, done well. This town is pretty darn good right now, okay? And South of 50 will be better than what we've done here, and we'll keep up and we'll be as equal to them. I, I'm confident, you know, this council, before my time, I came in in '08, I could have the, the luxury of having the second bridge, I could have all the credit for it, I did nothing, okay? But they did a lot of, we, we'll get these things done, okay? Because that's what we do in Folsom, we get things done. Now, I, what, a lot of the, I had to give credit to all the, I read all the remarks, all the people had comments, and some of them, I think, really were more anti-growth than general plan stuff, okay? But they said it without calling it anti-growth, because, you know, everybody gets scared on that, you know, oh my God. Some of that wasn't, that's, that's natural. We did it before. He's not, you're not the first ones to say that. Eighty, in the 80s, 90s, we had the same conversation, the west-east area, oh my God, what it's going to do to the town. It's a pretty nice area over there right now, isn't it? So we'll get through it. But I want to comment all the people, well, say thank you to all the people that did submit the remarks. When I read their remarks, and then I said, oh my God, I'm a little worried, and I read the response from, from staff. And, you know, Fred, I know Fred real well. Fred used to be a federal employee, okay? So Fred, Fred had a high-powered job, okay? Only thing, I believe in our staff, Fred, and I don't necessarily need an oversight committee to advise me and lead the staff as how I should judge things, okay? I love people participation, but I really don't think that I need to go that far. Our staff is outstanding, okay? They've been outstanding for the 37 years I've been involved. So, but that's okay. We need, we need participation. Robert, Roger is, is my alter ego, you know, on Facebook, okay? He wants to tell the world, you know, stay in your house, take your shoes on, put your pajamas on, and you'll make the whole world good, better. Well, I'm a different guy. I sat in this chair way in the back in that corner for, for some 20 years, listening to the council do all this stuff. And there's no substitute. We all here tonight, you can look around, look who's making faces, who's booing, who's doing what. You can't do that as you're rocking chair, you cannot do it, okay? And then we talk about, Roger got accused of saying the wrong thing on Facebook. The only thing, I'm all for Facebook, any media, you can tell people what's happening, do it. But the only thing, it's sometime on Facebook, it's, it's how you saw something. Me and Roger can sit here and look at the same thing, you hear I have one opinion, I have another one. It puts it on without a counter. Me and him have been accused of bickering. I like to call it debating on Facebook, okay? Bickering is just that we don't like each other. Well, we like each other pretty well, okay? He's only 50 years younger than me, that makes me envious, but that's okay, too. But, you know, on Facebook, you only get one side of the story, and if it's the wrong side, somebody's got to answer. So it's not bickering, it's debating, okay? But I, I think this general plan is great. I think that, I, I think we got to give a lot of credit to our professionals that helped us. We're blessed to have a director that has the experience in general plan production for many years. We trained her, and then she went away and got smarter, and then she come back, and now we can use her, okay? This is all good. I'm ready to move this on. I'm not ready to carry another 1,800 pages of, of anything around the moor. I'm, I think we, I think we've explored everything. I'm, I think we, I think we've explored everything. Andy said it, Carrie said it. We're gonna make amendments, we're gonna improve it. And, and I don't like to, I almost got knocked off a week ago because I was on Sibley, gonna make a left-hand turn off of Sibley onto, no, to Toma. And I was, there was a young, a car coming out of Old Town on Sibley and they, very nice and kind, said, come on, you can make the left-hand turn to go to Folsom Boulevard. Well, I started my left-hand turn and thank God I did instead of him, because I looked to the right, we have a four-way stop, thank you Mark for that. Only people don't necessarily stop at four-way stops. And I looked to my right and I saw this car coming down and I said, there's no way that car is gonna stop at that stop sign and he's gonna send me into the, to the cemetery next to the garden park. And I stopped and within a half foot, he missed me, okay? He came through that intersection at 70 miles an hour, he had no intention of stopping, okay? So, we have problems like that, okay? The LOS. I don't want people going faster. In fact, I've talked to the police chief, we gotta slow this town down. We don't want to give them room to go faster, okay? But all this will, will come out of this general plan. We'll make, we'll make it better, okay? The young people that Roger represents, they'll come forward, they'll become old like the rest of us, you know, like the mayor, they're starting to peel on their age, you know? And, but in the meantime, they'll make contributions, we'll get there. So, I'm, I'm proud of the work that you all done, really, okay? And I'm proud that you gave me time to, to read it again, but I'm done reading it for now, I wanna, I wanna vote on it tonight. Thanks.
I'll move resolutions.
Wow, okay.
Both 10147 and 10148.
I'll second. No, I can still make comments, but I got a motion in a second.
With, thank you, Mr. Mayor, with the modifications as shown and agreed to by the council tonight.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So I won't take very long because I'm getting old, as pointed out by my colleague here. As you remember, I started, I did have blonde hair and more of it, so I guess I am showing my age. What did I just say? Oh, anyway. I think my colleagues have really, pretty much the synopsis have appreciated and verbalized and pretty much gave kudos to everybody involved in this plan. And really, at the end of the day, it was a team effort by a lot of people, including the ones sitting in the audience, including the ones watching us at home, all the people that participated in the six years. And I'd even argue back, the participation, in my opinion, started really in 2004, when we started putting workshops around this community for everything, including the Folsom Rand South of 50. So I can't thank the community enough for stepping up and actually participating, even at a greater level than we've ever seen before. Especially my first 10 years, yeah, I'm getting the old dude up here. When I was on the city council, we hardly had anybody come down, we hardly, hardly anybody participate in any of the outreach programs, workshops, et cetera. So I think everybody deserves a round of applause for themselves. Pat yourselves on the back, give yourself a win, because as we've said before, they may not be perfect for everybody in this document, it's a fluid document. You know, it's gonna tweak, it's gonna change, it's gonna be sections that we're gonna find out that maybe we could've done better with new information, et cetera, et cetera. So even though it may pass this evening, just realize it's, it's a fluid document in its entirety until the next document comes along. And no, I'm not gonna sit in the back room 30 years from now and, and watch Ernie sit up here and make deliberations on the next plan. So with that, we have a motion and a second, let's call a roll on the item.
Do you want an individual roll call vote?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So on the approval of resolution number 10147 with modifications as agreed to tonight, we call the role of Councilmember Moran.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
Howell.
Yes.
And Miklos.
Yes.
And on the motion to approve resolution number 10148 with modifications and as agreed to tonight, we call the role, Councilmember Moran.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
Howell.
Yes.
And Miklos.
Yes. So ladies and gentlemen, congratulations for finishing six years of very hard work. Thank you. So with that, if you stick around, Ernie's gonna have cookies and milk in the back room. You're welcome to bring your pajamas. Oh wait, we do have another item.
Here you have another item.
Clerk, please call the next item.
Your last item tonight is item number 9C, presentation of options for the selection of mayor and vice mayor and provide direction to staff.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Stephen Wong, City Attorney. The council first reviewed this matter in April and it is being brought back to the council for further review, discussion and hopefully direction to staff. And I will summarize most of those slides, I wanna not repeat the slide deck last time as much as I can. So according to the city charter, the mayor and vice mayor of our city are selected by the city council. They serve at the pleasure of the council and the selection is made every year at the first regular meeting in December. The vote is simple majority vote and this election process has been in place since 1990. So if the council wished to change how the mayor and vice mayor are selected, some of the options to consider may include, one, making no change to the current system, two, using a modified election system by the city council, or using a rotational system, or a system based on seniority, or based on the number of votes a council member receives at an election, or directly elect our mayor. Since option number one requires no further action by the council, I will skip and jump straight to option two. Option two, modified election system by the city council. Under this option, the mayor and the vice mayor continue to be elected by the city council with modifications such as limiting service as mayor to once every X number of years, extending the term of the mayor and or vice mayor to more than one year, or electing only the vice mayor and the vice mayor automatically assumes the mayor's seat after serving a number of years, or impose other qualifications the council may wish to consider. Option three, rotational system. Under this option, the mayor and the vice mayor will be selected through a designated methodology. The remaining council members will automatically rotate to the seat of the mayor and the vice mayor after a period of time based on their position on the rotational list. The list can be created by drawing straws, or based on the number of years of service, or based on the number of votes received, or any of the above, but require that the council member must have served at least a number of years on the council prior to becoming the mayor. And I'll go through options four and five individual as well. So if a rotational system is created by drawing straws, incumbents do not lose ranking if they are re-elected and the newly-elected council members start at the bottom of the list and they are ranked by either drawing straws among themselves or compare the number of votes received with each other at the same election. Option four, the seniority system. If a rotational system is created by comparing each council member's year of service on the city council, the council member's seniority can be either cumulative or consecutive. Cumulative means that all of the years of service will count, including break in service, and consecutive means only uninterrupted years of service will count. And the council members with the most years of service will serve as the mayor, council member with the next most years of service will be the, the vice mayor, and the vice mayor becomes the mayor after serving X number of years and the newly-elected council members will be ranked with each other because they will all start at the same time when they will all have the same number of years of service. Option five, top vote getter. If a rotational system is created by comparing the number of votes received, the council member receiving the most number of votes will serve as the mayor and the next council member receiving the second most votes will serve as the vice mayor. After a one-year term, the vice mayor becomes the mayor and the council member with the third highest number of votes received will serve as the vice mayor and the ranking will refresh or reset after each election because we're comparing the number of votes received. Lastly, option six, directly elected mayor. Under this option, we will require a charter amendment, which means that a ballot measure will have to be submitted to the voters and I can discuss this in more detail if the council wished to choose these options. So to recap with this short refresher, if the council wished to change how the mayor and vice mayor are elected or selected, the council may consider several options, including making no change to the current system, using a modified election system by the council, or using a rotational system, or using a system based on seniority, or based on the number of votes a council member receives at an election, or directly elect our mayor. And at this time, I would like to ask Assistant City Manager Jim Francis to share some practical examples with the city councils to how some of those methodologies might work and might look like for your consideration. And happy to answer any questions after the examples.
So the option that I'll review for you is a rotational system. And you would start off with a standard, what I would call a standard rotational system where the mayor always goes. If you list the council positions from one to five, one being the mayor, two being the vice mayor, and then down through five, after being a mayor, that, that position will always go down to the fifth position the next year. The vice mayor becomes the mayor and all the members move up at least one position. Now, this would just be the standard rotational rules and that would happen in any in-between year where there was no election, or in any year when there was an election but all the incumbents were elected. So as you can see in this example, the, the member that was A as the mayor in year one would become the fifth, member would move down to five, B would move up to mayor, and C, D and E would simply move up one. If you do that without any, again, without anyone not being re-elected, so all incumbents win in the off-years, over five years, everyone would have an, A, B, C, D and E would all have a chance, or would all be the mayor, and it would rotate. Now, the fact that you have elections and those are undetermined creates many options to that. So you have to have some other rules to govern those, those options. Using the criteria that you must have at least one year to be mayor on the council, and election year members who are not up for election would have to rotate up at least one position. Incumbents within the elected group cannot be ranked lower than any newly-elected member, so if you've been on before in, in that election group, you'd always be ranked above any newly-elected member. Newly-elected members would start in the bottom positions except for rule one, which is that the mayor becomes the fifth in position five, and they're ranked in order of the number of votes they received in their last election. Again, except for rule six, which is the, the incumbents cannot be ranked lower. And then the last criteria would be that incumbents do not give up their rotation into either the mayor or the vice mayor positions. Now, the way that would work is if you have two council members up for election, in this case, it's, we're saying council members C and D, you have four options that can happen with that. So if C and D both win, again, it's your standard rotation. So member A becomes the fifth member, member B becomes the mayor, and C, D and E simply move up one. So that's your standard rotation. If one of the two members up for election wins and one loses, again, because A didn't run, the, the mayor goes to five, B goes to be mayor, and then C, who won, becomes vice mayor, D, who didn't win, becomes a new member and goes to the bottom, except for the mayor's position, E moves up, in this case, two positions. If D wins and C loses, it's just, you just reverse D and C on that. And then if C and D both lose, then you have two new members and they're ranked according to the votes they get in that election. Now, if you go to three people who are up for election, you actually have eight options. It gets a little more complicated. So I won't go through all these in detail, but again, if they all win, it's your standard rotation, where the mayor A goes to five and B goes to be mayor and everybody moves up one. Then you go, though, to the options where two people win and one loses, and you can see that you'll have different configurations of that depending on whether it's, in this case, A, C or D. And that's where, where A loses. So in this case, A, who was the mayor, go, becomes, they lose, so you have a new member who's actually in the fifth place. Now, if you have, again, with three people up, you can have one person win and two lose, and again, you, you now have in each scenario, each option, two new members who would be ranked according to their, their votes in that election. And you have different, you simply have different configurations of that. And then if, if everyone loses, then you obviously have three new members who would be in that, in that order. Now, if I apply that to our existing, your existing configuration, we put the, the position because we know the, obviously, who's the mayor and who's the vice mayor. Councilman Moran was the mayor the year before in 17, so we listed him as in the fifth position. And then with Councilmember Gaylord and Councilmember Howell, we did it so that everybody on the council could, would be in the position of mayor at some point during their term. So you only really have two options then in this case because two of the seats are vacant. So if Councilmember Howell wins, you'd have this, this configuration, again, following those same rules. And if Councilmember Howell does not win, then you'd have the three new members, again, ranked in order of the number of votes they had. And that's it. That's, that's how rotational system would work.
And you figured that out? I'm still ordering off a menu number one because I want three items from number four, too. Any questions for, for Jim? Well, thank you, Jim. Thanks staff for, for putting those examples together. So it's up to the five of us to, who wants to lead off? Roger?
I'll lead off. This was kind of a passion project for me and I think the way you laid it out is, it's clear and understanding and I think it really gives, if we're not gonna, in my opinion, if we're not gonna directly elect a mayor, I don't think internally we should establish who would represent as mayor. I think it should be, since we're all appointed at large, or elected at large, we should rotate through so that each council member has the, first of all, the, the training to build up into from council member newly-elect to vice mayor to mayor, which that clearly shows. And folks who haven't had the chance to represent as mayor in this system, I think this gives them that ability, so I, I like it.
Who wants to go next?
I'll, I'll jump in. You know, this is, it's a process certainly I've lived with for a long time as far as our existing process. And it does get, it does get acrimonious at times. You know, I can see benefits one way or another. I suppose, and I've given this a lot of thought over the last few days, and I'm, made no secret about being very defensive of our existing charter. I think it's served this city well. And, and I, I just can't come up with enough of a reason in my mind... come up with enough of a reason, in my mind, to make a change. So my inclination to this point is just to support exactly the way we do it now. But I suppose the other piece to that is, is that when we have, you know, a new council set up, it's certainly something a new council could, could consider if, you know, if our current system stays in place after this evening. But it, this is tough. I mean, you know, for those of us who have gone through this process, which is all of us up here, you know, there's feelings that can get hurt based on, you know, wants and needs and wishes and things like that. So the rotational system, which is something that is utilized by other cities in the region here, certainly works for them. So this is something I'm really on the fence on, but my inclination at this point is just to continue to support what we have in place today.
Well, naturally, I'm going to go to rotation, because I've been sitting here for nine years and haven't had a chance to choose for mayor. And I had some real weird explanations when I was the vice mayor in my third year, why I wasn't to move up for mayor. And I accepted it because I didn't know any better. I'm smarter today, okay? And that's not a system. So what I say, I definitely think the rotation. Now, have I had any complaints with the mayors? No. I get along with them. I got along with them before I got up here, okay? I worked with them. But I don't necessarily like the system. It just isn't right. There's a lot of pettiness that sometimes gets in, into this. And I think the rotation system will, especially this year, will make it. And once we get into the rotation system, it should go on. Now, I think we all have a tendency that the people elect the mayor. That's a good theory. But in our case here, you have to take a look at all the ramifications of doing that before you just say, let's do it, okay? We have a lot of power structures in the, in the, who does what and that. And so, where we made some recommendations go on the ballot this year, that was, those are easy compared to making a recommendation to direct election by mayor. My gut feeling said, yeah, let the people decide. But you gotta look at the whole picture and be sure they know what they're deciding, okay? It just, it just has to be. So my choice would be, we do need a change, and I would go with the rotation in number, I think it's three, the last one we saw. I support Roger.
Carrie, any comments before I jump in? I'm kind of going to go with Andy. And this is, you know, kind of a weird situation for me, because I am up for reelection this year. But, by the same token, I've been here for 20 years. I've said this the last time we talked about it. I participated in the Charter Review Committee meeting that took place about 18 years ago. Thirty-something people sat on that Charter Review Committee, and this was one of the items that we discussed for probably two and a half meetings. And you will remember, there was Harriet, Joy, Steve Rudolph was the city attorney. So the people, I don't remember if Bob Holderness was on that committee or not, but the committee was made up of a wide variety of individuals that came from very varying political standpoints. They, there was groups of people that supported certain people on the council, and hated other people on the council, and supported this other group on the council. It was, at the end of the day, that was the only thing, I think, that we talked about, and we came forward with, I think, maybe 20 possible minor changes to the charter, none of which got enacted. But that was the one thing that everybody agreed, that the system that we have in place now is unpleasant largely for the five council members sitting up here at the time. But all 30 of those people agreed that, as irritating as that was for the council members, in the long run, it was the best choice for the city. So I am hesitant to change the uncomfortable, awkward situation that it is now.
Well, let me give you my thoughts on, on the process we do now. And I always like to say when people say, you know, the, the people don't elect the mayor, actually, they do, because the people elect the five of us. And I always say, you know, if you're putting us, five of us, responsible for, like, a 200-plus million-dollar budget every year, putting police and fire services on the street, et cetera, et cetera, I mean, you have elected the five of us. And I kind of look at the scenario and the way we do it as similar to a board of directors. And who elects a board of directors? Shareholders, people. And then amongst the board of directors, they select your vice chair of the board and your board chair. And the reason I believe in that system, quite frankly, is the fact that the people have elected us to keep us all accountable, to measure our successes and certainly our failures. And even if you have failures, it doesn't mean you can't be a mayor. So I want to make sure that's, that's clear. But the people that elect us don't get to see what we do other than sitting up here. And there's a huge amount of things that we do. So again, I take it from a corporate standpoint, if you want to call it that way, where I look at, okay, you were a board of directors, the shareholders elected the board of directors, and the shareholders put that responsibility in the board of directors to select a chair and vice chair. That's just, again, this is how I looked at things. I also look at it from a job standpoint. You know, all five of us got a job, you know, and all five of us do a superlative job. Well, someone's going to get promoted. And, you know, at some point in time, as Carrie just pointed out, and Andy even, and in fact, all of us, it's uncomfortable sometimes who gets the promotion, who gets the ultimate promotion, because we all work very hard. So, but I actually took something with, actually that, that Mr. Gaylord said a couple meetings back. And this one's one of those examples where I said, that one makes sense. I'm not willing to make a change right now, because, as he said, there's a new council coming in. I just was thinking in my head, there's five more meetings of this current city council before a new council comes in. And so, similar to the task of, hey, let's lump on a new system to them, let's let them and the two senior people still here make whatever decision is, because I don't want to, I'm retiring, everybody knows that, as well as Andy.
We're three senior people, just saying.
Yeah. My point is, you know, two of us are making a decision on behalf of two people that are going to take our seats. And to me, I think it's important for the five of the new council, who are, pardon me, whoever it may be, certainly, we know at least two will be here, to make that decision. That can be done the same evening, in my opinion, that they're sworn in. To me, that, that makes the most sense. So there's a number of systems up there that are there. I'm not, I mean, again, I like the system I just laid out. It is very uncomfortable, but I think you earn the right, you do the work. And the best way, in my opinion, that everyone gauges who does what, is uncomfortable it can be. Not everyone gets a promotion, not everyone gets where they want to be, and so on and so forth. But I still think that's the best way that the people are represented by the person that, if you read the charter, what the mayor's duties and responsibilities are, and I happen to bring some of the highlights of what that is, there's a lot in here. But I think there might be, you know, again, that's up to the new council, in my opinion, to say, look, can some of those things work? They might. I like the fact that, I don't like any system where the highest vote getter automatically becomes mayor. That's just wrong, in my opinion, because there's so much involved. Like Ernie said, he sat in the backseat for almost 20 years, and he got up here, and he's made, especially early on his career, he's going, oh, my, it's really different when you're up here. There's so much to learn. Roger's getting a crash course and all that stuff, and it's very difficult, and I don't disagree. So to me, I don't, to me, I'm just going to make a motion to leave it as is, and, and my sole purpose for that is to let the new council, probably led by Ernie and Roger, to make that decision when they, when they're sworn in. But I know, Roger, you want to say another comment?
Yeah, before that.
I want to say something, Dan, did you say?
No worries. So I completely appreciate, first of all, the Charter Amendment Commission and their input. But quite frankly, as much as, I mean, that's kind of an outside look onto what's inside the council, and it is a hard decision in here for mayor. So having seen that last, or the last being elected was, that's what just reinvigorated me to push for this, because it's a little different from an executive or C-suite level position, because we're elected. We're not, we're not hired. We're hired by voters, but we're all hired at large. So we all have the same responsibility, and we all have different agendas that we come to the table with. And the way it's, and I'm asking, maybe keep an open mind just until I'm done, but the way it's structured at this point, it's, it's hard to not be, you know, cumbersome in the process on that, on the way it is. And it'd be so much easier for ideas to flow and for newer council members to experience a new wave. We have new council members coming in. I'm already new. I'm seeing this as something that I think would benefit. And the change, I think, would be at this time versus after the fact, because right now, I mean, honestly, we don't know who's going to be elected and who's not, and ideologies kind of play into that. So I think at this point, having someone who's sat here and put the time and work in, that he can rotate through, and Councilmember Sheldon might choose to run or not, I'm not sure after the fact, but at least he does his, he does his position there. I follow suit. I'm learning from, you know, someone I consider a mentor. I think it's great for the city. And we start the process of kind of evolving a little bit with, with the change. So instead of saying, I think, you know, going forward, and I don't, I'm not knocking the notion, but I think this would be the time. And you've convinced me on that same, when you said, you know, I was hesitant about the general plan. Tonight, I am convinced, because we were able to work it out with staff, we were able to work it out with colleagues, that, that that kind of process should have been, should be approved and was approved. So I'm grateful for that. The mayor, the mayor position, though, I think it has to be done in a way that either it's, and I guess it's just an opinion, but either it's voted, or you're elected as mayor, or it rotates through, so it's not an internal battle, or, you know, I'll just outright say it, it's not a popularity contest based upon relationships or, you know, terms you've served with folks, because you just, you know, you just don't think that they have what it takes, and so there's a, you know, an internal process to pick it. And that's really what I've seen going forward, and I want to eliminate that before new council members come in, so that we can all have 12 months of a decent agenda to say, here's my, here's what I think as mayor, because I'm elected, and then it goes into the next person. Here's what I think, and we all work together. And I think that's how progression flows, so.
Roger, I think we, we all need to work together regardless. And I think part of the problem, and I think that you're putting perhaps a little bit too much, much faith in the power that the mayor has over the agenda. The agenda really is driven by staff, and the mayor's additions or deletions from, from what's on the agenda, I think, are far less significant than I think you think they are.
What I think I think is that we don't have, we should not have the power, and I'm speaking from somebody up here with the power, to choose our own mayor. I think the people would either A, rather elected, or B, rotate through.
I, I've heard what you said, but I just wanted to point out that I think-
I know what the roles are, so it's not what you think I think, and just being completely honest, it's not what I think. I know what they are. I follow, you know, I watched Steve do his job very well. I watched Andy represent, you know, very well. I know what it is, and it's, we have, we have a weak mayor system. We have a strong city manager, weak mayor. I get that. So I'm not saying there's one, like, humongous benefit, but what I am saying is that for this city, if, you know, let's just, let's just say Ernie Sheldon was the highest vote getter on this dais, right?
Which I am, by the way.
Let's just say he was. Who are we internally as a council to say, he shouldn't serve as mayor? We're not. The vote, the voter spoke, and he got a highest vote. So I mean, that, I'm not saying, the way Jim, or Assistant City Manager Jim Francis, I always look at Steve, and he's always a council member, like, anyway. The way you laid it out is exactly the way I think that, and we have, like, seven of the council members, I don't know, maybe take a poll over there, but, or candidates, but I think this is how it should be structured. And if it doesn't work, they can decide to change that as a council at that time. But this is the time to invoke something new, so that folks can actually get some ideas flowing that necessarily aren't there yet. So I don't-
And, you know, I appreciate where you're coming from, but you have to understand that me, as a longtime council member, and probably to some degree, both Steve and Andy, you're suggesting that because we've been here too long, we're not thinking. I personally take offense to that. So at this point, you know, I'll agree to disagree, so.
No, I'm not trying to offend you at all.
Okay, I want to, I want to go back to realism now, because I'm the guy that lived and walked the walk, okay? I didn't talk the talk, I walked the walk. I come on this council in '08, '09. The four existing city council people, which I knew very well, all were endorsed by the Chamber of Commerce. Every one of them got elected because they had the power of the chamber. Don't fool yourself, it's there. Okay, I had no problem. I was learning mode, and I don't mind learning things. So at the time I come on this council, mayor is Nicholas, vice mayor is Starsky. One year goes by, Starsky's the mayor, Andy's the vice mayor. No problem, I'm fine. Andy moves up to mayor, I then got appointed, elected to the vice mayor. Everything's looking cool, right? Now, what happens? Now we have an election time, okay? There's a cycle. And Mr. Starsky says to me, you can't, you can't be the mayor, because we have election. And I turned to my mayor, which is Andy, and say, is that a rule? I never heard that rule before. And he said, well, I guess, I guess maybe it is. And I says, oh, okay, but you, okay, I'll buy it. I know damn well that the reason it was done, because he didn't want me to be the mayor in competition when we're running the election. I mean, I said, come on, just call it like it is. But I, you know, I don't care. It's like in the park commission. I ran four times for this office and got beat every time, four times, okay? But I went back and still did my park commission. I didn't, I didn't give up. I went back and did it. So I didn't, I didn't become the mayor. And then the next time, there's another cycle. Carrie Howell sat on this commission for 10 years and never had the opportunity to be a mayor.
Actually, Ernie, it was 12.
No, at the time, I think it was-
It was 12.
Okay. And guess who was up for, for mayor at the time? You're truly. But the unofficial, as I call the shadow government, decided, they don't want Ernie to be the mayor, so I'd rather take the, let the girl be the mayor, okay? And I'm, she never did thank me for making her the mayor, because that choice was better than me being the mayor. And it's fine, Carrie did a nice job. I've seen her on the regional board. She does a good job. It's not fair. It's never been fair. But life isn't necessarily fair, so we live with it. But if you just, the three, again, endorse chamber people, and I like, like, I'm not killing them for that, if we get three more elected officials, and all three chamber-elected people, we're right back to where we were, okay? And they had the power to elect a mayor, neither one of us would see it at the time of day. And there you're going to have elected, now, if Carrie gets back, and she'll have some experience, obviously, 20 going for 24. So, but if she doesn't get back, we have three, I'm telling you, it's just, I'm sort of disappointed, because I thought the outgoing people would understand the frustration some of us have. But guess what? When I wake up in the morning, I won't give a damn, okay? Because I've been there. I walked the walk, and I'll walk the walk again. And I'll be back here for the next city council meeting. I'll be back. And I won't have to put up with this two years now, because I'm not running. I'm telling you now, I've had enough. But I don't think it's a fair deal. And they can justify it the way they want to. They're still my friends. That's okay. Me and Andy have a big challenge to go. But I just wanted to share a personal feeling of walking the walk. I mean, it's all there. History doesn't lie, and they all know it. But, hey, there's bigger things. You know, being a council member is not the, the end of the world, okay? It's a step in the right direction. As all of us have told our ego scouts that we say, ego, making an ego scout is not the end, it's just the beginning. Serving on the council is not the end, okay? We still have a life to go, I hope, you know? So I just wanted to share that, you know, it has not been a fair system. You can justify and rationalize it, and I'm sure these people had pressures on them that we don't even want to talk about, okay? So I guess, say, it's just not up to this. I thought it was a slam dunk that we go to the rotation system, but you know, life is always full of surprises. So that's all I got to say about it.
So I'm not going to allude to a shadow government, or that that's the fact. I simply want to prove this concept, and I think it will work. So you motioned, I'm going to ask that, when we read these, that you, everyone take a minute and just think about this of, you know, both sides. A, it works, and it's a good philosophy, it's a good ideology, it works, right? B, it doesn't, the council at that time can do what we're doing here and change it. So as folks leaving, I'm literally asking that, we make this change and you consider it, and you let us try and prove this concept. If it doesn't work, we take, we take- If it doesn't work, we take, we take it back up. So it doesn't, I guess that's what I'm asking. So I'll close with that. So I, I appreciate the service everyone on this dais has given. I appreciate the fact that mayor is a hard job. I absolutely appreciate that. But I would, I would appreciate it even more if you gave us the chance, the new council coming up, the ability to do this, to see if it works. So I'll close with that. Thank you.
I, I have to jump in because I do take personal offense when people say that I was elected by the Chamber of Commerce. I was elected by the people. And except for one election, I was the highest vote getter. I don't think that's just a Chamber of Commerce vote. I think that's the city employees that asked me to run on every occasion. I think it's the fire, it's the police, it's the parks, it's just the people in general. Nobody controls what I say, what I do, who I vote for, who I don't vote for, what I support and I don't support. I listen to everybody and I make my decisions accordingly. So anybody that sits up here and accuses myself, or any of my colleagues for that matter, of being run by the Chamber of Commerce, it's sad that you have that much disdain for one of the best organizations in the Sacramento region, let alone the state of California, that has nothing but looking out for the best business environment for the community that we built to be number one, or number 17 in the entire country to live in. So I, I hope at some point in time that chip will go off your shoulder, Ernie, with all due respect, because they do a lot of good things. If I may remind you, it was the Chamber of Commerce that started the FAA, to which you've been the executive director for a number of years. It's evolved in different ways, and yes, there's been some discussions back and forth. But from that standpoint, I always take offense when someone says, I was elected by a, a special interest group. The special interest group was the 70,000 people that elected me in this city.
I think my term, Mr. Mayor, was endorsed, not elected. I said you were endorsed.
By the powers to be endorsed, and, but every comment you made was essentially kind of almost accusing us of being run by the Chamber of Commerce. So to my comment, again, Roger, you said a lot, a lot of things that certainly actually kind of can go back and forth, depends on how you want to interpret it, especially ideology. We have no idea what the new ideology of, of the three members may be. But was, but by your own admission, you actually admitted before, we should take this general plan up to let the new council do it. This is something that you don't want us to bring forward. We argued, no, we've had six years. That's a whole different animal. Otherwise, we're restarting this general plan every two years. So I took the initiative of saying, this is my personal ideology, and I will, I will take that to my grave, of how I believe a mayor, a mayor should be elected. When I'm turning it over to the two of you in your leadership roles, you can do it the night the new council gets sworn in. Put in a system, I think you also need to put in a system, quite frankly, it's called a check and balance, as, as in every example that was given, including here. If your mayor doesn't perform, you don't have to wait till December if you want to take the person out. You can take them out anytime you want. You can make a change to the system anytime you want.
So the other, on that topic, I mean, we have, let's say, for example, let's say three new members come in. A new member gets voted as a mayor right off the bat. How does that benefit anybody?
Well, you could take up, you could take up the system we were talking about this evening. I'm just, I'm just deferring to your original comment about let's, well, something of this magnitude, and, and you're deferring to us having the experience. Our experience, although we may not like it and have some consternation in how we select a mayor, but our experience and history of 16, 20, and 24 years says, we like our system.
It hasn't changed, I mean, yeah, to that point. But the, the issue is, is that it hasn't changed very much at that, you know, during that time. So you've been reelected. I don't, I'm not alluding you got reelected at any standpoint, except for running for your seat. I mean, that's fine. I, I think it got derailed with those comments, and that's not where I'm going. I'm not going to denigrate anyone on this dais.
Oh, no, I, I don't, I don't disagree with that.
Well, but it really, it really took it off the, the rail. So anyway, I'm circling back and saying, the only way to ensure that proper secession is going forward is that it's, it's a rotated council, especially at this time of day. Or at this time where we have three folks up for reelection. You guys aren't rerunning. And I mean, well, you are, sorry. So it's, I meant Miklos and, and Councilmember Moran. So to that point, and I keep saying that's it, but that is it. Just think about that when we vote. I mean, it matters. It totally does.
And I hear what you're saying. Me philosophically, I'm against any rotational type system. I think you need to earn it. And I think if there is a rotational type system you guys can put in place with a new council, then I think it needs to have a little stronger criteria than just once every election. Because you made a comment about being the highest vote getter. Yeah, in a, in a, in an election where there's two people, so you might have five running. We have three seats, you might have eight, nine. I mean, I never had less than nine people. In this case, it's 12. So that's really not a good measurement as far as who sits in what rotation based on what, because it never five are running at the same time to actually solidify who really is the vote getter overall.
You can justify it any way you want.
Ernie, I'm sorry, I'm still talking.
Okay.
You're only judging who the highest vote getter is for that one election. And of course, you have a smaller field, the numbers are going to look bigger. On a larger field, they're all going to be obviously proportionally different.
But the bottom line is the number of people voted for you, they voted for you. I don't, you can't argue which way it was.
Yeah, you can.
No, you can't. You can say you dilute the numbers because they have more options. But the bottom line, and if Jeff Stausky was sitting up here, I defer to him because he beat me with 13,007, and I had 13,004. None of you hit the 13,000 mark, okay? That's all I'm saying. It's no big deal.
There was only three in the race, and the last, the last time I ran, there was nine. So yes, it's going to dilute the actual numbers of who's going to be one, two, and three.
And, and I'm going to add one more thing to that.
I'll, I bet you Roger and I could do the analytics off the top of our head and prove it.
Would you nominate me, would you appoint me as mayor last year?
No, I don't think you were ready.
Okay, so how do you know the three new members, if Councilwoman Howell is not elected? Maybe she will be. If they're, if I wasn't ready, how do you think they're going to be ready? And I can assure you, I can assure you, they won't be ready.
If that doesn't happen, if I don't get reelected, you two are the, you know, the senior people on the council. I'd like to think that you would have the respect of the new council members, that they would choose one of you to be, to be the mayor.
There's 13 folks running.
There's 12 folks running, including me.
12, sorry. 11 new, one incumbent. So my point is, is that you don't know who gets along and who doesn't. And you're going to, just use me as an example. And I can tell you, sure, sure is not, sure is, I, I wouldn't have been ready for mayor the first year, which is why I didn't put my name in the hat and I didn't even ask to do it. So I, I appreciate that, and I've seen this. And there is no way that anyone coming on this dais, brand new, especially as, as a newcomer, just like myself, I'm okay saying there's no way they'd be mayor the first year. And this, this-
And that's, and it's never happened.
It's nev-, when's the last time you had three new people, or three people running for election, or three seats open, with two not running?
Before I was elected.
I'm just saying, it's been a while.
And, and while, I'm just telling you that there's never been a person who got elected to the city council for the first time and was made mayor. In fact, I would venture to guess that, again, I'd have to look at the stats. I would say it didn't happen for five or six years.
I, I don't know.
But at, at this point, I'd like to call a question.
Well, let me just add a couple of things here. You know, first of all, you know, I appreciate, you know, Roger's arguments here. Like I said, I'm, I'm, you know, really torn on this because I, I can see benefit to not having to squabble, you know, kind of like we're doing right now, every year in December. And, and it is, it's, there, there is some definite benefit to establishing a rotation like Jim showed us. This is probably the first time I've had my character called into question up here. When Ernie-
Hey, no.
Insinuated that because of certain people who supported us, that affects our allegiance to votes in certain ways up here. That Mr. Sheldon is not me, never will be me, and never was me. So, so, you know, that's, that's just damaging. So be, be careful with that, Ernie, because that, that, that hurts. Hurts a lot. So I'm going to stick to my conviction, but I, I would encourage Roger, you know, I'd, you know, continue the good fight on it. But, you know, I, I can't be threatened like that and then acquiesce to that threat, so I'm not going to do it.
What's your answer?
I, I don't know. I mean, I honestly, I honestly, I don't know how the conversation got to that with where that came from, so, I mean, I'll apologize if, if that's something I insinuated.
No, it's not, it's not you. It's Ernie calling me out.
No, I did.
Steve, can we please call the question and stop this?
So unless there's further discussion on the actual item. Hold question.
Councilmember Moran.
Uh, what are we voting on?
I'm sorry, the motion is for it to leave as is.
Um, yes.
Councilmember Sheldon.
Oh.
Councilmember Gaylord.
No.
Howell.
Yes.
And Miklos.
Yes.
I will, I will say, and I'm going to plead for whoever gets elected in December, to seriously take up the night you get sworn in. Take this thing up, because that's why I'm deferring. You know my ideology. I'm not going to change my ideology. But in respect to my colleagues, and/or if Carrie gets reelected, you guys take it up the night you get sworn in. And if you're going to consider rotational, fine. I would like to throw out there that, you know, maybe you need more than one year. But that throws a whole wrench into your rotation. But at a minimum, you need one year as a council member before you become vice mayor, let alone become mayor. I also believe that you should always have in place, however, because of people elect, all five of us at large, and it's, it's a very valid point, that if the mayor is not performing their duty, they don't get to serve out a whole term. And I'll use a perfect example. They had a mayor at one time in Citrus Heights. Six months into that person's term, violated the law, him and his wife. He got fired from his job, and the city council could not take him out of his seat. And it was an extreme embarrassment for that community for the following six months. I don't think that's right. We had that happen here. So I think we should always have something in place where if the mayor's not performing, or there's some kind of language within the, the letter of the law that allows a situation, and I think most of us know here which mayor I'm referring to, that there should be a mechanism to hold whoever the mayor is accountable. And a change by three votes can change that, that rotation, that position at any time, which is, as it exists today. So I'm going to ask again, all the people running for this election come up in November, respect my two senior colleagues when you get elected. And let's make, let you guys pick what you believe from your ideology and personal convictions to be the right thing to do, to continue, change, do whatever. But make that mayor selection your topic the evening you get sworn in. So with that, call the next item.
Your next item is city manager reports.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to extend my personal thanks to the outstanding staff team that made this general plan help come about tonight, including Pam Johns, Scott Johnson, Mark Rakhavan, Dave Nugent, Steve Wong, Jim Francis, and countless others. I'm very grateful to all of you. I wanted to announce that the Folsom Fire Department is going to host a grand opening for Fire Station 39, our newest fire station in Empire Ranch, along with a promotional ceremony on September 10th at 10:00 AM. You're all welcome to attend. Our Public Works Director, Dave Nugent, is absent tonight because he is accepting the American Public Works Association Project of the Year Award for the Orangevale Avenue Bridge Rehabilitation Project. The Folsom Public Library is now open from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Sunday, so look forward to extended programming on Sundays, including Storytime. The Folsom Veterans Day Parade is now accepting entries. If you or your group are interested in marching in the parade to honor local veterans, you can find out details on our website and sign up by October 26th. And finally, signups for Community Service Day are still open, which is Folsom's largest day of service, which will take place on September 15th.
And if I may jump in on, only on the, the one with the veterans parade, and the vice mayor and I had a conversation because he and his organization are the ones responsible for, for putting that thing together. I want to remind the community, this is a Veterans Day celebration. It's not to run around and stick something in the parade so you can advertise your business. Any entry that's not, and, and you show up that day, if you're not honoring a veteran, you're not going to be in the parade. I don't care if you paid your money, you're not going to be in the parade. If you don't, if you show up and you're not honoring a veteran, I don't want someone walking down the street handing out coupons for their business and there's absolutely no recognition of their veterans at all. You will not be allowed in the parade. And that's what we're going to stick to very, very strictly. So I want to make that clear. Because we've had too many complaints about disrespecting our veterans by businesses walking down the street handing out coupons. It's not what this is about. This is about honoring our veterans, period. So I just want to make sure that got out there because I know Ernie and I talked about it, and it's going to be enforced when he gets entries. So, anyway, so who wants to go next? Roger?
I just wanted to give acknowledgement again to staff for the general plan. It's been a long time, and, you know, I'm, I am truly grateful to be part of the process and to have my name on that plan and, and what it's going to do for the city going forward. So thank you for, for putting up with my 94,000 emails on it. And I appreciate the residents who all came out, who, who appreciate the outreach, outreach on Facebook. And I think Ernie was complimenting me on that. I'm not sure if that was it. Okay. But it's important that we're all, that we're all having discussions, and that's, that's really the, the, kind of a new way of doing it. So thank you for, thank you for everyone who participated and came out, and I'll close with that. Thanks.
Andy?
Yeah, just, again, just like Roger said, I know that was a lot of, a lot of work. And that was, it's a big day, big evening for the city of Folsom. So, so thanks to everybody who worked very hard to bring that to a, to a great conclusion. And then I hope everybody, all the back to school school stuff is going well. You know, we certainly see our, our, our traffic around the schools peaking now. And, but, but again, you know, good luck to all the, all the kids back in school. And with that, good evening.
Carrie?
Thanks to the staff that worked so hard on all of this for so many, many moons. And just a reminder, speed limit signs apply to you, stop signs apply to you, and red lights apply to you, so drive carefully.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
I'll just, you know, I mean, it was a heck of a performance for six years. And a lot of people got involved, and we, we appreciate it. And we'll make amendments. I mean, everything changes. So thanks for all your efforts.
So thank you, everybody, for, again, for, for that effort. I do need to point out for the record, I was in Tehachapi for Associates California Cities Representing Public Safety for our, our executive retreat. Got another update on the cannabis situation in California. And to quote the director, we built an airplane, but we don't know what it's going to do if it goes down the runway. We're not even sure it'll get off the ground. The tax, the tax dollars coming in for what they told the voters are not even close. In fact, it is so woefully underestimated. They're talking millions, and they haven't even cracked the 400,000 as far as sales tax revenue. So a lot of, lot of misinformation going on about there. Still trying to figure out how to deal with that thing. We also talked about the prison reform. Again, more prisoners being released early. And it's sad that we're releasing early in the name of saving a few bucks and, and not doing some things that really should be done as far as reform. There's a whole host of things. I'll probably going to write an email or sit down with city manager and I'll make sure that information gets posted out to my colleagues. But in a nutshell, for the people here and, and at home, the saddest thing is, is that the governor has had no, no less than, I think the count is up to 15 bills, bipartisan bills that have crossed his desk about taking some unintended consequences that 47 and 57 AB 109 created. He's vetoed every single one of them. So I'm hoping that whoever the next governor is listens to the people that not only elect him, but also elected the assembly members, as well as the senators. So when they bring bipartisan bills, of the people are speaking because they're, they're electeds, then I hope the governor will take heed to that. It's also very sad that through politics, there was a bill that was, should have been on the ballot this November, had all the required signatures. It's so funny that four city clerks in very small rural areas didn't have time to certify those signatures in those counties, so therefore it got put off to a vote in 2020. Nice way to defer the, the people's vote, made it very clear by almost three times more than what was needed for the signatures to put that measure on the ballot, which would undo some of the unintended consequences of 47, 57, and AB 109 that the governor refuses to take up, again, with all the bipartisan bills that have gone to his desk. So much so that some of the members of the assembly are being told by, by the governor through the leadership that they better stop writing those bills or else. I don't know what "or else" is. They're representing the people. So I'm glad we're having an election in November to hopefully have the leadership change at the top that actually respects the people's votes, including the people that represent the people that are sent down to the state capitol. Anyway, so that was my update on ACAPS. It was a very intense meeting. They do a lot of good work. As I shared with you before, Mayor Ed Grimes from the city of Tehachapi was, was the host for the meeting, but unfortunately he passed away in March. We still held the meeting in Tehachapi in his name. And his wife was given a couple accommodations, not only from ACAPS, but the state senate, as well as the state assembly. And we also got them from a couple of local congresspeople. Ed was an integral part in the organization and was the longest-serving member, which now is me. So it was really kind of cool to, to honor him by still having that down there, so. And thank to Commander Browning. I thought, there he is, right there. Jason did an outstanding job. He's one of our keynote speakers again. job, he's one of our keynote speakers, again, was able to bring to light a number of issues, and what was even more demonstrative, when Jason usually speaks, he gets audience participation. So, I think we had a really good 45, 50 minutes for your presentation with the, the feedback and the participation from other law enforcement, as other electeds in the room, so Jason, thank you, again, outstanding job, and for people who don't know, Jason helped us craft a bill with his suggestions and so on and so forth, and it's moving through the assembly, I think it's going on to the senate now. It has to do with crime, crime gang prevention funding, and if it does pass, we as a city will also get our share of some additional funds for the police department, for anti-gang, anti-crime fighting, gang-specific type things, without, I don't want to go into too much detail.[1781.01]